All right. Are you ready? You're good? I'm going to give Elizabeth a minute here and she'll get ready. All right. Just a budget. All right. Good morning, everybody. It is 10:02. We are a couple of minutes late. Sorry, we were just getting organized here. I will call the meeting to order. And with that, this is a regular meeting for the Washoe County Board of Commissioners for May 18th. It is 10:02 a.m. And with that, Mr. Justin Roper, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Nice to see you this morning as well. All right. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Of course. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Vaughn Hartung, Vice Chair.
Unmasked.
Alexis Hill.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Jeanne Herman.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown. Assistant Deputy District Attorney Nate Edwards.
Present.
And I'm Jan Galasine, your county clerk. You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. And first, right out of the gates, before we get started, I want to thank everybody for coming and being in attendance this morning. And I know it's been a great change to have some CDC guidance this last week for those of you, us, that have been vaccinated for the ability to not wear masks indoors. So we appreciate you participating in that, whether you've been vaccinated or not. If you have been, you can take your mask off. If you haven't, please ask you to keep your mask on. And with that, just kind of setting some ground rules. Mr. Manager, will you take us into item four, sir? Or item three, sir?
By Washoe County Director Amber Howell and Chief Justin Roper on Washoe County Human Services Agency and Department of Alternative Sentencing Supportive Programs. They're both in chambers this morning, Mr. Chair.
Wonderful. It's nice to see your smiling faces. Ms. Howell, it's nice to see you, Chief Roper, as always. Ms. Howell, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Good morning, in person. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I have a small presentation, and we thought it would be a good idea to also talk a little bit about SOVER-24 and how that circulates all of our populations and where we pipeline individuals so you can see the full circle and what we've been up to. So I'm coming on six years with Washoe County. There's been a ton of growth in our region and how we serve the vulnerable, and so I'm happy to report some pretty interesting outcomes for all of you. And Chief Roper is here, too, to talk about SOVER-24 and how much progress we've made with that as well. So there's quite a bit of synergy that occurs within the HSA programs and SOVER-24. There's really about three different avenues that an individual goes to, either Crossroads, SOVER-24, or Our Place, or, of course, an alternative location. And I'm speaking more to the adult population, but I'm going to talk a little bit about how all of these programs have fed into child welfare and what it's done for some of our children in the foster care system. So we get referrals from a variety of resources, law enforcement, of course, court. Washoe County HSA refers individuals, the sheriff's office. We do have a full-time social worker that is stationed at the sheriff's office. That's been going on for about a year. And that's been critical for those that are being discharged from the jail, that they get assessed and get an intake into the Crossroads program. So there's not a wait. That was something that the Commissioners wanted for a long time, and we were happy to be able to achieve that. So Crossroads, of course, as most of you know, back about five or six years ago, Crossroads was primarily a male program. There was 108 beds. That's how it started. And we had 22 beds for women. But we quickly noticed on the child welfare side that there were parents that were on the brink of losing their parental rights or waiting for substance abuse treatment facilities, and they couldn't get into a program because there was no beds available. And what that means for children in the foster care system is they can't be reunited with their parents because their parents can't get treatment. So we started looking at how could we increase the women's beds, only knowing we only had 22 in the community. And that's when the Grace Church stepped forward and said, how can we help in the battle of addiction in Washoe County? And we quickly said, we need beds for women. And so they answered to that proposal. For those of you who've been around for a long time, Crossroads is not a rehab center. It's not a mental health facility. It's a housing program. And the idea behind Crossroads is that you have to have a roof over your head and food in your belly before you can start focusing on anything else. And that's really the whole intent behind the Crossroads program. And to give them a loving environment so that they can start focusing on what it is that they need to do to get their children back or to live independently and live a life of sobriety. And so we started this process, and you will see all of the various services. We get asked a lot about what services Crossroads provides. It provides a little bit of everything. It's a supportive community where everybody gets breathalyzed and drug tested every single day. There's intensive case management and then linkage to medical and behavioral health services. A lot of these individuals have chronic medical conditions and some pretty significant mental health challenges, and so we wanted to provide that as well. So that's primarily what Crossroads is. This is the men's Crossroads program. This has been the property that we've had since the inception, 108 beds. And then a portion of those beds on the property are for transitional affordable housing. So individuals start paying their rent, and they start paying into their treatment so that they get invested in participating and paying for some of those treatment services. And there's about 30 beds at any given time. We, of course, have seen a little bit of a bottleneck with the affordable housing of individuals exiting, so they're staying a little bit longer than we would like because of the affordable housing issue. This is River House. This was our only program for women. There were 22 beds. We still have this. This is on the NAMs campus, two homes that are stuck together. An interesting, fun fact is that these were foster homes about 20 years ago, and so we've recycled them and have continued to use them in the community. I mentioned Grace Church. Grace Church, when they asked what they could do for us in the community, they actually purchased us a house on Acacia Way for 10 women, so 10 extra beds in the community. But what we quickly found is that eight out of 10 of those women had children, and their children were sitting in foster care while they were sitting in a program because they couldn't be together. So we quickly pivoted and responded to that, and this became our pilot home where mommies and their newborns could be together. And so that program flourished and worked really well, so we turned the living room into a little daycare and playroom so that kids could be in their environment and have healthy activities. Then because of the progress that we had with the Acacia House, Grace Church came back to us and said, we want more. We want to build more houses, but the housing market was going up. And so we had these three cottages on the NAMs campus that we said if you could rehab these three buildings, it would cost less money and you could add more beds. And so they did that for $500,000. They gave us a donation, and we rehabbed three of those buildings. And those houses quickly became, we transitioned women from the Acacia House with children, and now all three of those cottages are family homes for women with their children, and the Acacia Home is strictly for women. And so what we learned is that there are more women with children than not. And so that this home adds 25 additional beds for women and families. So I'll talk a little bit about the outcomes. We, in the last year, this is a one-year snapshot, 71 total women. We had a pandemic, of course, so we had to decrease our census a little bit. We've had 18 graduates. 71 have gained employment. My favorite outcomes are that seven babies were born to sober mothers. 13 children avoided the foster care system. Seven were re-unified with their mothers following the program. So that's a total of 27 kids that got to stay with their mommies instead of ending up in the foster care system and moving to the adoption track. If there are no questions, I'll move on to Our Place. So Our Place is a rather new program for Washoe County. You all know how we got here. We had to rehab six buildings on the NAMs campus. We changed it to Our Place, named after William Place, the first person who was laid to rest on the campus. We've been open for 10 months for women and almost a year for families. All of these programs we have in place, the operator is Rise. They have 32 staff on the campus, and Washoe County has seven caseworkers, an APRN, and two mental health counselors. The lease has been revised that now not only do we have the buildings, but we have the land around it, which is significant for Washoe County, because if we want to add to the campus, we now can do so. The goal of Our Place, of course, is, the number one goal is to establish a relationship with every single guest, to understand their story, to figure out how they got here, and to help them get back to where they need to be. This is, has been the most critical component of the program, is that every single person on the campus, somebody knows their story, and someone is working every single day to figure out how to better their situation. There were a couple of things that needed to happen for guests without shelter. They needed to have pets. They needed to have locked places for their possessions. They needed to not be kicked out every day. They needed someone, they needed someplace to go during the day, so they're allowed to stay at Our Place as long as they're being productive. If they leave the site, they can't work with their case manager. They can't work on employment or anything if we kick them off of the property, and so it is open 24/7. Guests have their own space, their own room and location that is theirs. They take much pride in their space. And then, of course, we increase the length of stay from three months to six. And at six months, if they're not quite ready, we give them a little extra time to make sure that they can be successful. There is comprehensive case management, one worker per family or individual throughout their stay. They never change their case manager. And even once they leave the Our Place property and move on to an independent living situation, they still have their case manager so that they have that ongoing support. We have weekly staffings with the whole team to figure out what are the barriers? Why are they still here? What are we doing about it? Who's going to get on it? It's a pretty intense three-hour meeting every week, but it has really shown to be quite successful. We added two full-time mental health therapists. This has reduced our most calls, the mobile outreach safety team, to after-hours and the weekends. If you'll remember, down at the Record Street location, Most was showing up there two to three times a day. So we have almost completely eliminated the need for Most. And then we also have increased our peer support. So Crossroads graduates come down to the Our Place campus and get hooked up with one of the guests, and they have a person that helps them. So you will see all of the things. About three years ago, we did an analysis of the population at Record Street to figure out what is their story? Why did they come here? What do they need to get out of this situation? And so we really did a deep dive to figure out what was going on with these individuals. And as you can see, we now have a designated pet wing for those with pets. We have a designated senior wing. We have substance abuse services, mental health services, domestic violence advocacy. 75% of the women on the Our Place campus are fleeing domestic violence. 60% of them have mental health and substance abuse issues. And so the goal really is to change what their exit condition is better than what their entry condition was. And I'll show you some outcomes that shows that we're doing a good job at that. This is our newest building. We noticed that we had a waitlist for families about 10 to 12 at any given time, and so we opened a building in four weeks with a grant from Governor Sisalak's office, and we have completely eliminated the waitlist for families. There are no families on the waitlist seeking shelter as of today. So here are our outcomes so far after 10 months. For women and families moved in in June, we've had 97 families. 70% of them have been a success. 26 of them have gained employment. We've had 171 children and 15 pregnant women. We have served a total of 431 women on the campus. 48% of them moved out after two weeks, but 56% of them stayed past the two weeks, and 66% moved out successfully. So 66% of the women that are exiting Our Place are exiting successfully. This number, 120, those are the ones that had pets. Had we not given them ability to have pets, those are 120 individuals that would never have gone into shelter because of their pet. And that is the end of my portion. Just to close, we are up to 136 women at the Our Place campus, so we expanded another 36 beds because of the waitlist in the community and 38 beds for families. So things are going very well, and the program has shown to be quite effective, and we're making progress and changes every day. So that's my portion, and I'll stop for questions, and then Chief Roper is going to do the alternative sentencing one.
Great. Are there any questions for Director Howell? Mr. Vice Chairman.
So, Ms. Howell, you mentioned a 66% number. What about the other 34%? Where are they in the system? I mean, are they...
So a lot of them aren't ready. They stay for a couple of weeks, and then they decide that they're not ready to come into the Our Place campus. We give them still a diversion caseworker that they can connect to. We give a lot of other types of services for them, but that is the percentage of individuals that just aren't ready to come in. But we're starting to see some of them come back. So sometimes it takes a couple of times for them to really think about what they want to do.
Are we requiring them to be clean and sober?
We are not requiring them to be clean and sober, but it is a drug and alcohol-free campus. They cannot have any onsite, and if they do, they are eliminated from the program.
Okay. I'm concerned with that. I mean, I just, I see that portion as a revolving door. You know, we're just enabling the issue.
Well, what we are finding is those, we have had about 15 of those individuals that have a substance abuse problem. They are pipelining up to the Crossroads program.
Okay.
Which has been great, to have everything on the same campus.
With respect to the Crossroads campus, what do you see the, and I think the Crossroads campus is great. I think, you know, SOVER-24, those are phenomenal programs. Do we see a need for increasing space in Crossroads so that we can, so we can get them out of our system? I mean, I don't want it to be a revolving door. That's my personal opinion.
What we are seeing these days is we have enough capacity for men and women. What we don't have is a place for them to land after they leave.
Okay.
And that is, that bottlenecks the system, because after you've worked with someone for nine to 12 months and they've been sober, if there's no place to put them, we don't want to discharge them because then they go to the streets and then all of that work has been, so it's the affordable housing that seems to be the issue.
Okay. Have we talked, and I know, I know there's been issues, but have we talked to some of the major employers? So years ago, when I moved to town, and this is, you know, 1980, I worked for Harrah's. And I was able to live at the Rivers Edge Apartments, and Harrah's helped subsidize that. My rent was reduced because I worked at Harrah's. Have we talked to the, to some of the major employers about how that might be a possibility? It's not a new concept, for God's sakes. Bill Harrah thought about this in the 70s.
Yeah, we have not yet. We, there's a lot of grants. We got a $6 million grant for Reno Housing Authority to help with housing. We've done a couple of other things, but I think we're at the place of, our programs are effective. They're working really well. We're meeting the need in the community as far as beds, but it's the what, what now? And I think we're there to start exploring that.
Thank you. Appreciate the hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner John, I have you sign in next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Howell. Do you happen to know, or could you get for us, how many people on average are discharged from the sheriff's office per day?
I can get that for you.
And what that social workers' caseload is?
I can get that for you.
Because I'm wondering if we might need more resources or not there.
Yeah.
I just would love to have that number. And then to the Vice Chairman's point, I agree that to be recirculating is in some ways futile, but many people who enter programs, whether it's because of domestic violence, substance abuse, mental illness, they usually have to try seven to 12 times before they quit whatever your dirty habit is, and every one of you have one. It takes you about seven to 12 tries. So what we say in the recovery world is relapse is part of recovery, and that it helps you, because it's kind of like going to school, right? Whether you paid attention or not and you sat into a good class, just, I mean, I hope that's what you tell your kids anyways, just go, show up, because you're going to get something out of it. So part of that model, while it is frustrating and it looks like a revolving door, they're actually, the more times they've relapsed, the more likely that this is going to stick. It's very, very unusual in any of your filthy habits that it's one and done. It takes many times of making the choice and then making a bad choice, and then going back to what choices will further your life. So I think it's great. I think that we need a future agenda item, though, to address what do we do with people who are ready, don't make enough money, and there's, in the market, there's nothing they can rent? And a creative alternative are, there's many employers here who cannot keep up with the wage creep that is happening from some major employers, that that might be a partnership we look into. Maybe we'll manage it. If they don't want to get into the renting and subletting, we own property all over this county. Maybe we give them some property and say, you build it.
Right.
I mean, I think there's, but I think we need an agenda item so we can discuss what's, I mean, give you time, too. What's out there, what's not? And where, when and where are we going to fund our housing trust fund that has sat gloriously empty? We did it. It was a big push, and there's no money in it. There never has been put any money in it. So I think it's also a pivot for all of us. Where do we want to go? Who holds that responsibility? How much do we want to be involved? But, and working with tax incentives and all the other fund levers that we can pull around here. But I agree, we are turning into an unaffordable community, but that doesn't mean that employers don't need employees. So it's a win-win. And the generosity of casinos back in the day, if only we could have that again. You guys got fed breakfast, lunch, and dinner whenever you wanted. I mean, you, that was the cool job to have around here, to say you worked for Bill Harrah. Oh, Harrah's, okay, I'm sorry. Well, I'm not from here. I don't know, but I've heard. Okay. Well, and I know your wife has a long employment history there, too, so they used to really do these. I mean, and it was an honor to work for these people. It was a competitive job. This wasn't just some schlups who came in for the summer to backpack. I mean, these were careers and with good insurance. I mean, I have a poster child for this right here, and that's the Vice Chairman, the child that's no longer a child. But I think that ultimately, that bottleneck has to be addressed, and it's going to be a community-wide lift. And we're going to need all of our partners with all of their deep pockets, including these nonprofit churches that pay no taxes and our nonprofit hospitals, et cetera, because you can see where it touches all of them as well. But I will say, I am thankful for those few churches who are tax-exempt, both property and other taxes, that I, they need to step up. We need more, more, more. It's not going to be less for a long time with the housing crisis that we're in. And if anybody knew when that bubble was going to break, none of us would be sitting here because we'd be billionaires, right? So I think you've done a great job. You've taken this to a very next level in terms of coming in with new, fresh eyes from the state to be able to identify who are the players and what the real cost that is from a government perspective, emotional costs, social costs, people not manifesting their destiny that they were born to do. So I can't wait to do a tour. I know I'm so late to come down there, but I would like to do a tour of Our Place. And if you don't mind, sit in in the beginning or the end of the big staffing, because I'd love to hear the ideas and what, because I'm a little rusty in that area, but I love that. You know, I'm very passionate about social services, so.
Okay.
Great work. Thank you for making us a model. And I might want to mention these grants that you've got, came from, really where this came from was the Chairman, Lucy, trusting you and the Assistant County Manager to go forward, and then you convincing Governor Sandoval to give us NAMs. Now we have the land. We're pretty rich, as far as I'm concerned, on paper, you know, liquidability, in terms of what we own. And then the other side of that was working with what we have now and really how we've grown and learned. This issue of homelessness is so multi-dimensional, but I thank you for those heavy lifts, and I thank the Chairman for his heavy lifts, because this is completely revolutionized. And it's no secret that Madam Secretary of State Hillary Clinton, when running for President, came here to Reno just to tour Crossroads, because she wanted that to be a national model because of our outcomes being so good. And most importantly, for people out there, the accountability that was built in. They get drug tested and alcohol tested every single day, no matter what they've been doing, whether they've been perfect or out partying the night before. So there's a lot of built-in accountability. And what we've learned in the data, if you don't have that, there is the revolving door. People are going to figure out where's a soft place to land and then where you can take off and do whatever you want. So, so good, Amber. I'm so very proud of this county, and it's neat to have a board that has taken this on under the leadership of the Chair and his wife, I might say, the Lucys, have really been the ones who have done this and turned this into a human issue and not a partisan or philosophical issue. It's just, it's there. We have to take care of it, and we're doing it. I'm proud. I hope we're putting in awards. You guys love putting in for awards and paying the entry fee. Let's get those going, because this is one that I'm happy to champion behind. So thank you, Ms. Howell, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board for your leadership.
Thank you. Commissioner John was very nice for those comments. Commissioner Hill, I'll have you sign in next.
I also just want to reiterate the comments of my fellow Commissioners and really look forward to digging into the policy of next steps with you, your team. And then I know we're hiring for next fiscal year a housing specialist, so really figuring out, okay, how are we going to help with this affordable housing crisis that we read about in the newspaper weekly? So it truly is a crisis just for both the most vulnerable people and then people who have jobs who can't get this housing. And I'd love to hear, you know, down the road from you, other issues that you're experiencing. I understand that there are some women that can't leave because we don't have any group housing for mental health care. And so any of those kind of issues that you're running into, because we're, although the legislative session is closing now, it will be back open before we know it, so let's figure out how we're going to go to the state and ask for these resources. And then also the ARP funding that we'll be having, it's a great opportunity for the county to invest in these type of programs. So your big-picture thinking, which I applaud you for, I can't wait to see what you recommend for us to do with that ARP funding and how we can help these folks and expand these programs and prevent, you know, down-the-line issues, you know, kids staying with their parents. It's invaluable of what it does long-term for our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Ms. Howell, this has been a wonderful project to work with you on for the last about four or five years now we've been doing this. And it's wonderful to see it come to a true fruition, and we've been very fortunate, however, with our regional partners to really help us along the way. It does take that first step and that initial thought and that initial dream to do these things, but it's because of the regional partners. It's because of the cities. It's because of the federal government. It's because of community members and leaders such as Grace Church to get involved to really address this. And this is the first step. Now we got to work on, we work towards other steps, because this is not just, this is not just a homeless shelter. This is not just programming. This is so much more, and how this impacts every aspect of what we do at county government, from our judicial system to our public safety, to our businesses. This is impactful, and we are, we're taking those first steps to really make that change. And it's because of you and your staff. You know, I can't, we can't leave out Ms. Schweiger. She has been an absolute rock star. And through COVID, I mean, this, it definitely showed us the need, and that need grew tremendously, and how we can continue to do this. I know with Chief Joe Ingraham and Assistant County Manager Schiller, when we traveled to New York a few years back, that was the first time we really saw kind of a different approach, you know, a different way to look at this, instead of just cycling people through and sending them, and sending them to jail. And, you know, we've all heard about Million Dollar Murray. This makes quite the change for that. So I'm glad that we, that I got to be part of a board that really made that, those substantive changes and invested some time and money into it. And I think we'll see some great return on that down the road, and I think we're getting that kind of traction. And it's thanks to you and your staff and all the time and everybody, and Assistant County Manager Thomas, and, you know, the belief. And it takes a lot of time and effort, and it's not without showing how wonderful it is. So we appreciate you and all the work that you've done and your direction. So we appreciate you and, and all the work that you've done and your direction. So with that, Chief Roper, oh, okay, one more question, Commissioner Harbaugh.
Yeah, one, one more question. So Ms. Howell, do we have a program where we're working with employers to get these folks a job?
So that's an excellent question.
That was never really touched on.
Yeah, that was, that's one piece. Dieter actually has, they are on the Our Place campus, but they're on the other side. And they have offered to come and set up within the Our Place campus so that they, we can have linkages to employment. And so that is the next step to get Dieter on the campus to start with the employment. But we do have companies through Crossroads. You know, companies that take our, that will hire our graduates. We've had them for a long time. It's been super helpful. So it is a, a piece of their case plan, much more on the Crossroads side than Our Place. But, but definitely moving them over to figure out what is their trade. They have amazing talents, a lot of these guests and, and, and how they, they landed where they are. And degrees and education and skills. And we need to place an employment piece on the campus so that they have direct access.
Well, and one of the things, you know, it's interesting, Commissioner Jung brought this up. And, and it's, and it's quite true. So when I worked at Harris, we had reduced meals. But when I worked at Circus Circus, we had free meals. And I would show up in the morning and I would feed myself. And then in the afternoon, I would eat again. And then before I left, I would eat again. And Bill Pennington, Bill Pennington literally kept me off the street. I mean, I was living paycheck to paycheck, you know, at, you know, $52 a shift. And I was paying $550 a month for rent. When you look at that, the, what I was making versus what it cost me to live, it was a huge, huge benefit for me. Not just the, the medical benefits, which were of no consequence to a young man unmarried. But the food was, was really big. So I, I'd, I'd like to have an offline conversation about working with some of the, especially the casinos. They have a lot of excess food. And if they don't feed their employees, they have reduced costs for meals. But maybe we can help with that to make sure that these people are being fed and, and employed. Because that's, that's a big deal. That's a, I mean, that's a huge deal. And getting them back on their feet. And I just happen to be lucky enough to be in a situation where, where there was a man who, and his foundation, you see, the Pennington Foundation is, is still very, very active in our community. But Bill was a, he was very, very generous to his employees.
I'll just add that when we did the analysis, 55% of our guests have income. And that's why the analysis was so important before we built Our Place. And the question becomes, if income isn't the issue, what is the issue? Mental health, substance abuse, abuse, any of those things and how to leverage that. So there's really two populations, one that can afford to live independently. But we have to figure out why they're not able to. And then the other side is employment and getting people back into the workplace. So it's actually two very different tracks that, and that's why learning these stories and engaging with these individuals and figuring out, you know, having that relationship. The relationship has been everything. We have found families from other states where they ran away or got lost and we reunified them. We have individuals who need a higher level of care, a group care setting. But if you never sit down and have a conversation with them and learn what it is that they're struggling with, you can't change it. And some of it's been low-hanging fruit, that we've just been able to reconnect. And that's why the caseworkers are so incredibly important to this program.
I appreciate it. Sorry, Mr. Roper. I apologize. Thank you so much, Ms. Howell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Chief Roper, take us through.
Good morning, Chair, members of the commissioner, for the record. Chief Justin Roper, Department of Alternative Sensing. I really appreciate being invited by Director Howell this morning because these relationships have what's made the county successful as a whole and made our department successful. The Department of Alternative Sensing is tasked with the misdemeanor probation program for the county. So any misdemeanor crime that is sentenced to suspended sentence or house arrest is sent to our department for monitoring. Looking at the data coming from across the nation, to be successful at probation, you have to meet three legs. One of them's accountability. We're excellent at accountability. That's all probation has ever done throughout history is accountability. But to be successful, you need the two other legs. That's rehabilitation. What is it, like Director Howell said, is causing them to commit the crimes or to be within this cycle? So we had to find ways to address the substance abuse issues. You know, a lot of it, they didn't have appropriate upbringing. So they were lacking some social skills that have made them go into this cycle. And then the last leg was habilitation. Now, this is one we're all struggling with, but we're making headway. But the collaboration with HSA, with Crossroads, is giving us doorways into where we can get these people into housing and off of the street, a more stable environment. So by putting these three lakes together, we're seeing greater outcomes coming from our misdemeanor probation where we do not want repeat customers. So, you know, a successful completion without recidivism, without them reoffending and be back into the jail or back onto our caseload is our ultimate goal. We want them to be successful in life and to achieve whatever goals they have for themselves. So it was Chief Ingraham that recognized this about six years ago, that we were just kind of chasing our tails. We kept seeing the same people coming through over and over again. And he started reaching out and looking at the different programs throughout the, the country. One of them that he found was the 24/7 program. And I believe it was Montana or Montana that they went up to and took a look at the program, where they had them testing every day. And they were doing breath testing. It was mostly a DUI program. So they were coming in, they were breath testing every day to help them maintain that sobriety, that constant reminder. And then there was incentives built in for them by going through that program. The chief brought that back here and before he even got off the plane, the judges had bought on and they had given him his first participant in the program. So it was a kind of a trial by fire for us to get going. We, we got it up. We got the, our new location at 1536 Street. We created a sober 24 program in Washoe County. And we started doing breath tests and testing for alcohol and for drugs with our population. And we found that in Washoe County, drugs was more of a problem than alcohol. And so that created a problem because the original 24/7 program that was brought back was really directed towards alcohol. So we had to make a shift, a paradigm shift for us. So we started with presumptive drug tests, which was the norm within the, the law enforcement community. And we were doing urine tests within a cup and we're just reading the results. But then we started getting anecdotal evidence that that wasn't successful. We were getting people that were catching with drugs when we were doing home visits and stuff. But they were having negative test results. So we started doing a lot more investigation and found out that they could go online. It's easy to go online and find ways to beat drug testing. If you just Google it, you'll find hundreds of ways to beat drug testing. So again, we reached out. And in 2019, with the help of the commission, we brought in our own drug testing lab under the Sober 24 auspice. So we are doing immunoassay testing, which is not the gold standard, but it's right below it. It's about 98% accurate. And we implemented that and lo and behold, we went from a 6% positivity rate for the tests that we were running prior to that to a 30% positivity rate when we brought on our in-home lab because people were beating it. We could test for more drugs. So the opiate crisis was going. People get into the opiate courts. But there's kratom. It's a, a non-regulated, plant-based drug that gives the same effects as opiates, but it's very expensive to test in an immunoassay lab. And nobody had it here locally. We brought it online and found out that we had a large population defeating the opiate crisis by using this substitute that wasn't regulated. So we started hammering on that and brought that down. Long and short of it is, this is going to be a continually evolving situation. And that's where we are going with the help of like HSA, with the help of some of our other sober living environments in the community, is to continually evaluate how we can be better, what we can do to address the underlying issues. Sober 24, why it was originally created for our population has grown now, especially with the in-house lab, where we've reached out to everybody within the county. If they want to use it, we would create a contracts with the district court. We have HSA with their child reunification process or any case they send to us. Or you're working with juvenile population, with juvenile probation, with Eddie House. We do not collect juvenile on-site. We do not want to mix those populations. But we have it set up where they'll collect, bring it to us, and we'll run it through our lab. So we're developing more and more partnerships throughout the community because we have this valuable tool now sitting here and we want to use it and we want to make it available to everybody. I haven't used this one in a while. So again, the Department of Alternative Sensing, under 211A in 2005, was set as the misdemeanor probation program for the county. We think we're more than just a misdemeanor probation program. We think we are an accountability and an assistance program, just like any other social program within the community. While we want to hold them accountable to the judge's order, we also want to provide the tools or at least direct them to the appropriate resources where they can be successful continuing on in their, their lives. Obviously, safer community for everybody. I think that's all of our goals on a day-to-day as individuals, is to make our community better and safer. We're trying to reduce the recidivism, as I said. We don't want people coming back through. We want them to succeed and, you know, tell us what they want from this program. Let us help them get it and get them to where they hope to be with their future. Reduce the burden on public services. Million Dollar Murray was already brought up. You know, when we have these people that have substance abuse or mental health crisis going on, you know, when they're out there continuing to either draw upon medical services or be arrested, obviously that's a burden to our society. And so by having this case managers, as well as officers there, working with them on a day-to-day process, we, we see that we reduce that, that burden on the community through those services. We always strive to assist probationers in making positive changes in their lives. The collection rate on there, why it's important that we're hoping to offset some of the costs. It's not, it's not really high up on our list. If they can't pay it, then absolutely we collect it. But that's not the, the end-all, be-all. We want to make sure they have the services that they need, the accountability that they need, regardless if they can afford it or not. Our strategic plan is that we're going to continue to work on reducing that revolving door by exploring what issues are addressing the underlying issues for them and to try to direct them to the appropriate services to hopefully address that. We know that we're always going to have, and as Commissioner Jung said, relapses or setbacks within the program. We understand that that's part of the program. But we make them understand that there's an accountability portion to that. Doesn't necessarily mean jail, but there's some kind of accountability portion to that, whether it's working closer with their substance abuse counselor, whether it's maybe giving some community service hours back to the community. Just starting to understand that your actions have consequences, but they're not necessarily just go to jail kind of thing. So that there, there's a, a ladder kind of that we work our way up, you know? And we want jail to be the last place that they end up. And then the sober living, while that's never, I shouldn't say never, but that's why it's not on our radar at the moment for anything that we would be running a sober living environment. We will continue to have these collaborations with like HSA, with the Eddie House, with Crossroads. Whatever, whatever organization comes into the community that wants to work with us, where we can provide habilitation piece of our, our probation services, that's what we want to do. These are kind of beating a dead horse of all the things that we, we do and we strive to do every single day. Ultimately, we want to hold the person accountable because probation is the sentence. It is their punishment for the crime that they committed within the community. But while we're holding them accountable, let's give them what services they need to make them successful in the future. So some of these probation outcomes, we were a little skewed last year with COVID. Why we never shut our doors. We shut our doors for a week, but why we didn't permanently close for any extended period of time. Our caseload count did go down quite a bit for our probation cases. But you can see that the 2,121 successful completions of the courtesy cases, so these are cases that we supervise for other agencies like an HSA, like an Eddie House. They went up because we didn't close our doors. So we made it that people could still be held accountable, that we could monitor them to try to ensure that we didn't see that national trend where drug usage was going up because of the pandemic. We kept our doors open. We came up with creative ways to ensure compliance with the drug testing. Instead of doing PBTs where they blow into a straw directly into one of my staff's face, we went with electronic PBTs that would connect to a cell phone and that they could have out. And it just made it actually much more, much more attainable for the public because they didn't have to come to us every day. And we had constant monitoring of them out in the community. So while the pandemic was terrible and we were happy to see that it's kind of dwindling down now, some of the technology that it brought to us, I think we'll continue to use from here on out, just seeing how invaluable it was for us. And we will continue to explore those options as we move forward. This is, again, where we said money isn't the end-all, be-all. It is still important. We tried to offset our costs as much as we can. And you can see from the graph here that subsidized, and this is tests that are paid for or monitoring that is paid for by the, the ordering agency, is way up there. So you're seeing that a lot of this testing is paid for not by the person themselves, but by the agency referring them. So we, we as a whole are all trying to move towards recognizing that, you know, just providing a service because the person can afford it is not the way to go anymore. It's providing that service because they need that service. So we found that to be very, very valuable for us. And then here's just a list of, in 2020, all the agencies that actually utilized our drug testing services or our probation services. So you can see, we touch a wide, a wide net there, all the way up to Alaska. Somebody that was on probation out of Alaska asked us to do the drug testing because they lived in Reno. Carson and Douglas County DAS, we all work together. So if somebody's living in our respective jurisdiction, rather than making them go back to Douglas or Carson, we'll test them for them and vice versa. And then we're working with pretty much all the courts now in Washoe County. So we hope to continue to expand this list. We, we hope to continue to expand the services that we offer. And we just, we strive, my staff strives every day, to provide the best that they can. Any questions?
Chief Roper, thank you. That's a phenomenal presentation. You know, and I, it's, without, without that enforcement piece, you know, we, and that accountability, it's really difficult to make sure that these individuals not only stay on track. They need that support. It's not just having them be self-managing monitoring, but that support from your staff. And I got to tell you, even though the uniform is, we're there. It is, they're the most humble, most welcoming individuals in your department. They're amazing. You've got a great team. Joe was a wonderful chief. You're an amazing chief as well. I think we've seen some wonderful things come out of your, your department in the last 15 years that have really set us aside. And it's the collective that you continue to point out between human services, yourself and other departments and the courts, that really make this an effective program. And to Commissioner Jung's point, this has made federal news. This has made county new, I mean, this is countrywide, that what we have been doing here, to the extent people continue to come and see and visit and see the programming that we've put together. And this is, we're not, like I said, we're not going to stop here. We're going to continue to, to evolve this program because it's, for the programming that you spoke of, everybody comes from a different situation and it's just identifying what those individuals need. One of the great things that we have here that this commission did play a massive, a good portion of is standing at the Business Improvement District in the Downtown Reno Partnership. One of the things that, to the vice chairman's point, business improvement districts around the country do this in regards to offering, working through their local businesses, trying to find ways to get entry-level positions to people that are participating in these types of programming. And so they, we are putting together the building blocks for that foundation for really, truly making a difference within our community and changing the outcome for so many lives. Because it may seem like this is very costly and all these different programs and what we're doing is spending a ton. It's actually quite, quite a bit more cheaper to do this than it is to send them to jail and have them sit in jail and incarcerate them. Because that's not helping them and that's not putting them back into a place where they really can be functional within, within society. So I want to thank you for all your work. I think you've done a phenomenal job. And your team has been great. Any other questions for Chief Roper? All right. Chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Howell, thank you very much. We appreciate all the work here you've had come today. All right, Mr. Manager, that takes us to item four, sir.
Item four is a certificate honoring the following Washoe County employee who has completed essential employee development courses. And today we're celebrating, excuse me, Brandon Smith, who's a manager in the Second Judicial District Court, Essentials of SAP for financial staff. The actual certificate will be sent to the employees, not here with us today, is my understanding. Brandon, are you here? Brandon, are you here? No, okay. And so Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and the professional development of our employees administered by the Human Resources Department. Excellence in Public Service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. Completion of these two courses, of these courses over two years demonstrates the employee's commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement and to Washoe County's journey of excellence. We're pleased to recognize that commitment today. Brandon Smith, manager for the Second Judicial District Court, has completed the Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff certificate programs. Congratulations to Brandon.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. You know, one of the things that we talk about quite often here at Washoe County, a very functional and a very beneficial part of having an employment here at the county, is this opportunity for our employees to continue to grow and evolve within our organization. Many individuals start very early on in their lives with us and stay for quite some periods of time, and this allows them to continue to educate and participate in further job placement. So we want to continue to urge people, our employees and staff, to take advantage of this very unique opportunity that you may not find in other places. And as we continue to get maybe back to our semblance of what a new normal is, this is going to be a great opportunity for those individuals to really kick this back up and get going again. So we want to thank Brandon and wish him well. Thank you for participating, and congratulations on all your work. All right, Mr. Manager, that takes us to Item Five, sir.
Item Five is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Quirk, will you please call public comment?
Of course. We have several, so if the second person will queue up, that'll speed the process along. First up, we have Brian Allegretto, followed by Elise Weatherly.
Welcome, Mr. Allegretto.
Good morning. This is mostly informational for you guys, let you know something that's happening in our community, that we're dealing with, with the city, that we would hope to get your support in the future. But just to give you a quick background, I know that sphere of influence is not a new topic here in the county and the city. We've been in the sphere of influence in our community in Mesa Park for 20 years. They just continue to keep us in this sphere where we have no city services, we don't pay taxes, but the big problem is we can't also vote for city council, and we can't change any of the rules that they're applying. The city has become more and more aggressive. We originally could go to the county for building permits, but our community was built in the 1970s. A lot of my neighbors were there before Interstate 80 was even there. They had a field in their backyard. And most of them are retired. They have older homes, lower-class, middle-class people. And now that the city is becoming more aggressive with the building permits, it's at a point now where nobody can do anything to their homes. Any permit that we come to the county for, to do an addition or improvement, to put in a shed, we're sent to the city. The city then tells us we can't build anything, they won't give us a permit until we put in urban improvements. When they originally did these sphere of influence rules in the city 20 years ago, and even through the 2017 Sphere of Influence Plan, their rules said that they wouldn't, they would grandfather in the county parcels, they would bring in similar zoning. I personally have three acres bordering open space and county, still county land, that's not in the sphere, that right next to me. And I'm on three acres with livestock, and I was recently changed on the planning map from GR County to suburban one acre. That is not the same as GR, as they said it would be. I've spoken to the city, and they said they want everyone to be the same. It doesn't make any sense because I'm next to open space and county land that's GR still. So they're going, everyone in my community, probably the majority of people right now are stuck, not being able to do anything in their homes because as we go to this county and then go to the city because of the county, the city is telling us, you can't have these building permits until you do urban upgrades of streets, sidewalks, herbs, gutters, drains, blacktopping your driveway to all structures. For me, I'm landlocked. I'm on three acres surrounded by other people, and I have an easement. I was told to put in a shop. I would have to, first of all, put it behind my house. I have two and a half acres in front of my house, and next to my house, my house is against the back of the property line, so I can't do that. They're going to force me to pave my neighbor's easement, put sidewalks on my neighbor's property. So anyway, just quickly, I have a petition from 100% of the homeowners to be removed from the sphere. We're on the agenda on the 9th of June in front of the city council to be moved from the sphere. And I know that if we were against our petition to be, try to be annexed in, that the county can also file a petition to not have us annexed, and we would just like to let you know this is happening, and we would love your support if it comes to the county level.
Perfect. Thanks, Madam Quirk. We appreciate it.
Elise Weatherly, followed by Cindy Sassanrath.
Welcome, Ms. Weatherly.
Good morning. Can I have an extra minute since you guys made me wait a minute? What I was going to say is, you guys probably wouldn't want me on this board because what I would do is some things differently. I would finally change the sign that says, you know, here's how much time we have left. It would go backwards instead of forwards. I don't know how many times I've asked that. I would not put on these kinds of agendas to make everybody that wants to make a statement wait, because there's no bathroom at hand. It makes it kind of hard, okay, guys? The thing is, I thought I would just give you a little brief rundown for who I was and see if you wanted to, you know, be with me, right? I wore the ugliest T-shirt I have because I was with in a band called Whitewater in 1980, the 1980s, right? They didn't care what color was good for me. I didn't know it really made a difference. Do you know why I left Whitewater? Because I was accused of being off-key. So I took my keyboards down to Star Sound Audio, and I think it was Terry that went ahead and said, "No, electronic keyboards don't go out of tune." I already knew that, but you know why I left? Because nobody would listen. All right, what about this community? We have this idea that everybody's good, right? We got good in everybody. Well, guess what? The police officers know that that's not true. There's some rotten people. Did you know that I might know somebody that was a graduate student of UNR who actually beat her child? Is that possible? And she didn't want to turn around? She spent some time in jail, and I went and talked to her and a few things like that. I won't say who she was. But what I want to say is publicly, I'm going to say thank you to some people. I'm going to say thank you to Judge Egan Walker, because even though I objected to Egan Walker's removal of Marvin Neil as the chaplain of the Janovans Youth Center after 25 years of service, he still let me have guardianship over somebody. Thank you, Judge. The thing is that now I have to say, I could have been wrong. You might have made a good decision, you and John Slaughter, for removing Marvin Neil from his position, only because he was trying to tell the truth, but he wasn't telling it in a good enough way, and he hurt somebody's feelings, so off they went. So I brought my phone because I was going to read it, but what the heck. So this morning, I was looking at an article from a doctor, from a scientist, that said 60 years of bad scientific theory has caused the COVID to kill, and it had to do with airborne stuff. You know what she got? Frustrated. Do you know why? Because nobody would listen. How about serving on boards? I've served on a lot of boards. Did you know that I was squeezed out of Highland Ranch Homeowners Association because they didn't want to go to the court to get rid of me? And do you know why they wanted to get rid of me? Because I wanted to look at the books. So I took classes from the state of Nevada, not another single board member did. They hired an attorney to threaten and intimidate me. So I went, fine, I have to pay for this, so we'll back out, and now we'll take steps to say, we are going to look at those books at Highland Ranch Homeowners Association because those books are bad. Is that an accounting thing? Yes, you can look at accounts and say, if they're not in balance, right? And by the way, Don Carano, I paid him every week for years. He didn't know my name. The only time I got ticked off of him was when he threw my band bass player offstage. How come the other guy didn't get thrown off?
Thank you, Ms. Weatherly.
Cindy Sassanrath.
Okay, just out of curiosity, a little double standards going on.
Thanks, guys.
Welcome, Ms. Sassanrath.
Good morning. I'm here again to ask you to open Washoe County 100%, no face masks. It doesn't appear that any of you are really listening. The CDC is now saying that vaccinated people don't need to wear face masks. I was asked if I was vaccinated. They didn't ask me what I was vaccinated for, so yes, I have been vaccinated. Removing the mask mandate does not prevent anybody from wearing a mask if they feel that's good for them, it's good for their health. We elected you to represent us and to be leaders. Be leaders. We've been asking for over a month now to end this stupid public health emergency. Give us our rights back. Anybody who wants to wear a mask can wear a mask. Anybody who wants a vaccine can get a vaccine. Anybody who needs any kind of medical assistance is able to get that. We are no longer in a medical health emergency. Let our businesses really start to recover. Let people get back to work. We need our tax base to grow. We don't want to be taxed out of California. I don't want to be taxed out of Nevada. I will. I'll go to Florida, I'll go to Texas, I'll go someplace where they actually don't think that they have the right to take all of your income. You need to stand up against vaccine passports. This made me very uncomfortable. What are we going to do? Have a little star on our foreheads next? Does my body, my choice, only apply to allowing me to kill an innocent baby? My body, my choice. No vaccine passports. Make this county be a leader in Nevada. We're trailing. There are seven or eight other counties that are ahead of you already. They've already ended this medical emergency. They've already gone back to living more normal lives. They've already allowed people to use their liberties to say, I'm going to go to that store, or I'm not going to go to that store. I'm going to go to that restaurant, I'm not going to go to that restaurant. I'm going to wear a mask, I'm not going to wear a mask. That's all we're asking. You guys should be leaders. Washoe County should be a leader, not a follower. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sassanrath.
Next up, Kathy Doyle, followed by Rick Snow.
Welcome, Ms. Doyle.
Good morning, Commissioners. Like Cindy, you should oppose the use of vaccine passports. Vaccine passports are a violation of our rights on three fronts. First, it's forcing us to put something into our body that we do not want. Yes, back in 1905, Justice John Marshall Harlan, in a case of Jacobson versus Massachusetts, wrote that a community has the right to protect itself against an epidemic of disease which threatens the safety of its members. Well, that was then. That was before COVID. That was before these experimental drugs. All we have now is FDA approval, emergency approval for the use of the Pfizer drug in adolescents. We should not be forced to put into our bodies something, an experimental drug that has not been FDA-approved and for which we do not know the long-term effects. Secondly, we have a right to keep our medical information private and should not be obliged to reveal it to whomever demands it. Third, the requirement of a vaccine passport to enter sports stadium, pub, concert hall, train, any other public venue is an infringement on our rights of movement and travel. This smacks dangerously of a compulsory national ID card, which exists in many countries and is an infringement on our civil liberties. So please oppose vaccine passports. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle.
Next up, Rick Snow, followed by Ann Sweeter.
Welcome, Mr. Snow.
Rick Snow, Washoe County resident. First of all, Nate Edwards, you helped me through some trying times three years ago. Appreciate it very much. That said, in November of 2019, I went to Janichism with about four items. Nothing's transpired. It's been two and a half years. I've been to Sayre three times. I tried to get an appointment with Mr. Brown. I got Mr. Cioreano instead. If I mispronounced his name, I'm sorry. But what happened is, we spent an hour and 10 minutes in there, had five major items of concern. Only one of them has been addressed to this point. Now, we've been sitting here for a little over an hour, listening to Pollyanna say, "All these things happen," and kumbaya, let's just do everything, and we're spending a lot of money. Why don't we hold people's feet to the fire? You were saying, oh, well, we're requiring these things. If you require these things from these people that are in a program, how about requiring things that happen in your own situation here in the county? I'd like an appointment with Mr. Brown to sit down and go over our concerns. Hasn't happened. I have a number, it's on there. You can call me at any time, and we can set one up. I think Alvaro would do that for you. What happens is, for whatever reason, the county finds a way not to do it instead of finding a way to do it. So I'd like to address that. Now, we have the people here for the fire department. In our neighborhood, there's a house 9458, you might want to write that down, or, excuse me, 94, 93, 94485. That house has 31 trees on it, five of them are dead, two of them are laying down. A shed that's laying down, a fence that's laying down. If that property goes up in fire, there's no water on that property, the whole neighborhood's going to go. I think that needs to be addressed. There are several things, I say, I have five major concerns, and none of them have been addressed, or, excuse me, one of them was addressed during the time. That was the people at Field Services addressed their portion of it. The other four didn't. So they have my number. I'd like calls from these people and set up something so we can get it done, a concrete plan. So thank you for your time, and let's all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Snow.
Ann Sweeter, followed by Tammy Holtstill.
Welcome, Ms. Sweeter.
Thank you. On May 13th, the CDC announced that vaccinated people can stop wearing masks outdoors and in most indoor settings. I find that interesting because a week before this announcement, I read that eight fully-vaccinated New York Yankees came down with COVID virus, with the mask mandate was still in place. This virus is so minute in size that masks do not work, and the vaccine will not stop you from getting the virus. It does make the symptoms less severe. The risks of this virus have been drilled into our heads, and everyone knows that good hygiene is important. I find it interesting that taking vitamin C, vitamin D3, and zinc to boost your immune system is never mentioned or pointed out to the community. A good immune system combats this virus the best. We know how to take care of ourselves, gives us the freedoms to make our own decisions about our health. Let's end this so-called public health emergency and open the county 100% with no restrictions. This would also include that no vaccine passports would be required. Also, using businesses as de facto enforcement agents should never happen. Please consider to let freedom ring and remove all of Washoe County's restrictions and watch the resources grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sweeter.
Tammy Holtstill, followed by Diane Craig. She needs the overhead, and I do have a document to distribute.
All right. Welcome, Ms. Holtstill.
Hello. Happy New Year. Tammy Holtstill, Lemon Valley Swan Lake Recovery Committee for the record. Here in front of you is part of an agenda that was for April of 2018, where you approved about $116,000 for the nation, or for the National Nature Preserve out on Swan Lake. Out of that $116,000, does it look like that's usable? You were talking about parks and parks being used. This is the nature study. This is the dock for the nature study. Where did that $116,000 go? You cannot walk on that dock. Here's another photo of it real quick. That is absolutely disgusting, that that kind of money was paid, and that's what our dock looks like. Onto the next thing. Back in 2019, I did a request, the proper way through the proper channels, for a Klamar for the elevation of Pato Ranch and other areas that was coming to be, which you approved Pato Ranch North, or, yeah, Pato Ranch North, knowing that it was connected to Pato South and that it was in a floodplain. South and that it was in a floodplain. And there was no CLOMAR, and you approved it anyway. So, onto—we're talking RTC. RTC, which you now have—a—you each got a piece of—I have done an official request for the CLOMAR for elevating Lemon Drive and widening it. There are several reasons that this is important. Number one being the fact that the last CLOMAR that Washtau County approved and took to FEMA, it put people into the floodplain that were not in the floodplain. So when you elevate Lemon Drive and you widen it at the same time, how are you offsetting that? You going to put more people in the floodplain so they pay for flood insurance that doesn't work? It is time for Washtau County to work correctly, the city of Reno, and for the residents—not for yourselves, not for the developers, for us. And when you're asked for information, you give the information. That is your responsibility. Federal law, people, and it's time to start doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holtstill.
Diane Craig, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good morning, Commissioners, once again. I'm here, along with many other people here, to ask to end this so-called "public health emergency." The definition of a public health emergency is anytime our community's public health or medical resources are overwhelmed—overwhelmed by a medical event may qualify as a public health emergency. As of 5/16, there are 27 COVID cases in all of Washtau County. Twenty-seven. There's eight patients in ICU and one on a ventilator. I am asking you to please open with no restrictions. And also—I am also asking you to please, please discourage all businesses to not ask or require vaccine passports, as this is only going to create a further division in our community and our businesses as a whole. Businesses will suffer—suffer once again financially, because they're going to probably lose at least 40% of the people who would go to them, because they don't want to have to present. I wouldn't. I wouldn't. It's none of their business. This—this whole vaccine passport thing, it goes against so many things. It goes against HIPAA. It goes against my privacy. You're going to create division and discrimination, which is supposedly what we're trying not to have. We're trying to come together as a community, so please, please end this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Nicole Harris.
Welcome, Ms. Butcher.
Good morning. Am I or am I not vaccinated? Don't need to tell you. It's not—not—you don't have the right to ask. Your little green dot is just like the Star of David, and I refuse to answer. If you have to make me wear this little stupid diaper, then I'll do it, but not for long. I've been many places, been to Iowa, been to California. I've traveled. I haven't stopped anything that I have done over the last year. I've not gotten COVID. I haven't been around—even been around anybody who has. So I was going to ask that—to stop—to ask you guys to end the public health emergency, but not only end the public health emergency, but let's not do this green dot business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Nicole Harris, followed by Irina Pepe.
Welcome, Ms. Harris.
Hi. Good morning. This little green dot reminds me of the Communist Party in China, where they pitted family and members against each other. It also reminds me of the AIDS situation, where you had family members who had to come out, say, "I'm gay, I'm not gay, well, we're going to divide." This does not unify us. We are leaders here in Washtau County, according to your mission statements. I believe it's time for us, for all of you, to take the leadership role. Washtau County is always lacking behind, and we are the second-largest county in Nevada. Where is our leadership? You're all leaders, and yet I don't hear or see you taking controversial positions of being leaders. This really reminds me of the Star of David. Second thing, if you're going to do vaccine passport—which I'm urging you not to, because I don't think you want to be on the forefront of advocating that—then why don't we have voter ID passports? Think about that. Isn't voting more important, really, at this point? Because the statistics show us that the CDC is saying we should do this, we shouldn't do this. Our own county doesn't have an emergency. We have more of emergency of what we teach our students in school, like Sex Education Act, kindergarten levels, critical race thinking—that if you're white, you need to walk the Walk of Shame. You need to renounce your being white, because you're privileged. And me, as a person of color, needs to say, "Hey, I want what you have, because you owe it to me." That's not helping us. We're not that kind of a county, and yet where is our leadership? We, as citizens, are stepping up to say, "This is not acceptable." So I ask you, what actions are you going to come out and share with the community for the leadership? Second thing is, I came here, I believe, in February, talking about election integrity. That was the buzzword. That was the community concern. And yet, what happened? We have no Citizens Committee. We have no leadership in what the county commission is going to do about that. We, the citizens, are asking you for the leadership. Where do you stand? Maybe I should be running for county commissioner coming up, because this is not what we do. We have to make a stand. This is not Communist China, and I watched what happened. And I came here before to tell you about the story of my father, okay? I do not want our children, our grandchildren, having to experience that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harris.
Rita Pepe, followed by Chris Thatcher.
Welcome, Ms. Pepe.
Good morning. I'm in agreement with all of the people that have spoken about the masks and the public health emergency and the vaccine passports. It is not a good idea, especially—the—it's an experimental drug, as people have said. It doesn't work. And I have 48 years in the medical profession, and I know about how diseases are contracted and passed along, and the masks do not work. So I'm asking that you please lift the mask mandate. And we are not in a state of emergency. As other people have stated, there are very few people that have COVID. There are very few people in the intensive care, and one person on a ventilator. That is not a state of emergency. That ended probably 12 months ago. We've been in this for 14 months, and we need to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pepe.
Chris Thatcher, followed by Deana Lane.
Welcome, Mr. Thatcher.
Welcome. Ladies and gentlemen of the Commission, I come before you today, and I ask you to ask yourselves this one simple question. I've attended several of these meetings. I have yet to hear anybody in support of anything this county has done as far as COVID response. I ditto what has been said before me by multiple of the other people that have come up to comment. Where's the leadership? You have let eight other counties in this state open fully before you guys did anything. You're sitting on your hands. I've never seen such a lily-livered bunch of cowards in my entire life. It's really interesting to me that you guys started this meeting with, "Oh, the great"— they were thanking you for standing up for the homeless and the people that break the law. Those of us that try to follow the law, we're idiots for following the law, because you guys just keep giving everything away. Give it all away to those that can't or won't. It's just amazing to me that you can show such leadership in that, but not in this case for COVID. I said it before, and I'll say it again, lily-livered cowards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thatcher. Welcome, Mrs. Lane.
Good morning. I'm going to read—I'm going to read from the Bible. This is Matthew 18. Who is the greatest? At that time, the disciples came to Jesus, saying, "Who then is greatest in the kingdom of heaven?" Then Jesus called a little child to him, set him in the midst of them, and said, "Assuredly, I say to you, unless you are converted and become as little children, you will by no means enter the kingdom of heaven. Therefore, who humbles himself—whoever humbles himself as this little child is the greatest in the kingdom of heaven. Whoever receives one little child like this in my name receives me. But whoever causes one of these little ones who believe in me to sin, it would be better for him if a millstone were hung around his neck and he were drowned in the depth of the sea. Woe to the world because of offenses; for offenses must come, but woe to that man whom by whom the offense comes. If your hand or your foot causes you to sin, cut it off and cast it from you. It is better for you to enter into life lame or maimed, rather than having two hands or two feet, to be cast into the air of a lasting fire. And if your eye causes you to sin, pluck it out and cast it from you. It is better for you to enter into life with one eye, rather than having two eyes, to be cast into hellfire. Take heed that you do not despise one of these little ones; for I say to you that in heaven their angels always see the face of my Father who is in heaven; for the Son of Man has come to save that which was lost. What do you think? If a man has a hundred sheep, and one of them goes astray, does he not leave the ninety-nine and go to the mountains and seek the one that is straying? And if he should find it, assuredly I say to you, he rejoices more over that sheep than over the ninety-nine that did not go astray. Even so, it is not the will of your Father who is in heaven that is one—that one of these little ones should perish. Moreover, if your brother sins against you, and go tell him his fault between you and him alone. If he hears you, you have gained your brother; but if he will not hear, take with you one or two or more that witnesses that might—that one or two—one or two more—that by the mouth of two or three witnesses every word may be established." So I just wanted to say—I'm asking that the public health emergency be ended and open Washtau County 100% with no restrictions, and please do it for the children.
Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Next up, we have Cindy Martinez, followed by Elizabeth Lenz.
Welcome, Ms. Martinez.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Mr. Edward's staff. Thankfully, I had some time to cool down. Your new screening at the front set the top of my head off. Requiring a citizen to disclose our medical health status in order to exercise our First Amendment right to petition our government for a redress of grievances is a violation of my right to privacy under Roe v. Wade, which I abhor. And it's—furthermore, it's a violation of the American With Disabilities Act and of HIPAA. And I am appalled that our government—county government—seems to be absolutely tone-deaf of your responsibility, of your oath of office that you took in defending and upholding the Constitution. We've been here since December 15th, every week without fail, and still, there's no respect for your oath to the Constitution. Now, we—a bunch of us went to—several thousand of us, a few thousand of us went to Battle Mountain this weekend with Sheriff Mack and the great leadership of Landur County and what they've been able to accomplish. And it's only sad that—that our own county, our city councilors—I cannot believe that this is the United States of America, that this is a state of Nevada, that this is the city of Reno, the county of Washtau, that we are watching our constitutional rights demolished. Demolished! It's unacceptable, absolutely unacceptable. I've four times taken the oath to the Constitution—Air Force ROTC, the United States Marine Corps, Sparks Police Department, and the Nevada Gaming Control Board. And believe me, my blood is red, white, and blue. I will die on this hill. I have made that decision. I will die on my feet. I will not live on my knees. I refuse. And it breaks my heart that this is what our country has come to. So I'm asking, demanding, that this county end the public health emergency. There is no health emergency. There are no bodies in the street. The reason that you keep the health emergency rolling is to enable the federal money to roll. And last week, the Commission made comments that it's not county money that's paying for these projects, it's federal money. Look around the room. Look in the mirror. We are the source of federal money. It's either that, or it's the magic printing press at the Fed. May I have the overhead quickly, please?
Yes. Can I have the overhead, please?
I'm a United States Marine, and your approval is not required. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Elizabeth Lenz, followed by Melanie Sutton.
Commissioners, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I have actually never taken opportunity, at least in this country, to come before any of my county commissioners. So I just want to give you a little background. My name is Elizabeth Lenz. I am a graduate of Rutgers University with a master's in public administration. I also have a master's degree in economic development. I have worked in 27 countries around the world. My focus and specialty are in post-Soviet economies. 27 countries that I've worked, and I've been doing that for the last 20 years. So I came back, and I made my home in Reno in 2015. And seeing the devastation and the direction that things are going here in leadership has driven me to come before you today. I want you to understand, I work for a public consulting company, the largest in the nation. I made my home here in Washtau County. That's a choice. Okay? And so now, my company is working here in Nevada, and so I—as a resident here, I do a lot of consulting for the Department of Motor Vehicles. I did the business analysis and helped create the roadmap they're presently utilizing for the modernization, and that's taking place right now. Okay? So that's part of my contribution to this area. I am also working presently for the Department of Public Safety. I am their consultant, and I'm helping them in their modernization that is taking place right now. I am a Lean Six Sigma Black Belt. That means that I use data-driven analyses, and so that's what guides my decision-making. And so I would urge you and implore you, if you haven't taken time personally to understand what the data is saying on this health crisis, you really need to take time to look for yourselves. I mean, you're all very intelligent people. Did you take time to look at what the data is saying? Do you really think that this is a crisis? It isn't. I see a lot of politics. I see a lot of agendas. Now, mind you, I'm coming from a perspective, a real reality, having given my life to serve and— in other countries. I had my own company, and I still have property in another former Soviet economy. And so I'm very active in the world scene. I know exactly what's going on, I can see it very clearly, and there's a whole large body of people who also understand this. Now, I want you to know that as a public consultant, I touch thousands of stakeholders, thousands in Nevada, thousands in Washoe County, and I can tell you, I'm representing their voice. They do not want this vaccine passport. It will economically damage and hinder the public safety in your state agencies for travel. It will really devastate the money that's flowing here and the people doing business. So I just want to urge you to please end this emergency, because it isn't one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lenz.
Melanie Sutton, followed by Kalen Sutton.
I would also, everybody that has spoken before me, I can list them, but I don't want to miss anybody, but pretty much I've said everything that I was planning on speaking. I just want to give you some evidence. I've been asking you guys since December 15th to be the leaders. You guys are not being the leaders that we elected you all to be. We have been asking to be the leaders. Well, guess what? You got this. Can I have the overhead?
Can we get the overhead, please?
This is what you guys handed out to us yesterday, I mean, last week, I'm sorry, on Tuesday. This is what you handed out. What the heck is the difference from last week to today? What is it? None of us are wearing masks now. You forced us to sit in chambers when you didn't previously force us to sit in chambers with our masks on, because when we go to a restaurant, when we're in the booth, we don't have to wear a mask. But you forced us last week, you changed that last week, and then all of a sudden, we don't have to have a mask? Okay, so I was asking you to be the leaders, and you did not. So I want to give you some evidence. So Lander County is the first constitutional county in the United States. They asked us to do a flag parade there. Three hours drive there from here from Reno. Guess what? It was three freaking miles long. They're the leaders. I was asking for you guys to be this. You know how much economic that we brought to Battle Mountain? This is our flag parade. Three hours it took us, and we gathered three miles of vehicles to get to Battle Mountain, which is three hours from here. And just little us, Envy grassroots patriots, was able to accomplish this. This was our biggest flag parade ever. Our biggest one prior to this was 120. I can tell you, this one was more than double for a three-hour drive. This is what I was asking you to do. I was asking you guys to be the leaders. That way, Washoe County could lead the state of Nevada and be the battle-born people we are. But no, you want to suppress us, even though you guys were elected to be leaders. We are Americans, and we are proud Americans, and we are proud Nevadans. And we look to you guys, we voted for you all. Hardtongue, actually, I spoke to a few people that actually helped you get elected. They won't be doing that next time. So this one, it's pretty far distance. This is just our flag parade. I haven't gotten to the rally yet. This is just America right here. So now this is the rally. Obviously, you know who Joe Gilbert is. Since May, the infection rate drops 90%. He told you that last time, okay? And then this is actually a constitutional sheriff, the first one in the United States. There you go.
Kalen Sutton is up next, followed by Catherine Snedeker.
Welcome, Ms. Sutton.
You don't have to say anything, just say whatever you want.
Can we have the overhead, please?
This is the rally. Just show the pictures. Say whatever you want. You can say whatever you want.
So... I don't even know why people are wearing masks. They're not even helpful. They just make you sick. Face, or not face.
You're fine, you have three minutes. Face coverings?
No. Face shields. Face shields are way more... Face shields are way more useful than masks, because masks make you sick. And the face shield doesn't even do anything either. So almost, like, only a few people here are wearing masks. But... They won't, I doubt they would show you, like... Okay. So my mom's friend Erin... My mom's friend won't show anyone her medical records or tell anyone her medical records, because they're, unless they're a doctor. What? So she can't come in, because she won't. And... Why is that? Now, my mom is just gonna show the pictures.
Catherine Snedeker, followed by Toni Pickrell.
Thank you, Ms. Sutton. Welcome, Ms. Snedeker.
Good morning. For the record, Catherine Snedeker, non-person, non-resident, un-entrenched natural woman. I don't know where you think you get off intervening in people's health. You have no authority to do that, but you've been doing it. You've been punishing people if they don't follow the doctor's orders. There hasn't been one shred of evidence that this is contagious, not one. Not one. We have been lied to by you people for months. You had 30 days, that's all you had. That's what's in the statute, 30 days. No extensions. No extensions allowed, 30 days. And that's to the hotspot, which would have been the rest home where the first 15 people died. That you could close down. You have no authority to come in and just rape people's businesses and putting them out of business. I hope they come back and sue every one of you personally, because they have the ability to do that. You don't think they do. "Oh, no, I have immunity." That's so easy to take away from you people. You don't have qualified immunity. It is a piece of cake to take your immunity away and sue you as the drunk in the bar. What you're doing to our kids and the school board, that's flat-out child abuse. First of all, they're not learning anything. I don't think it's a big bonus to the school board to say, 87% graduated, oh, but there's only 8% that really know anything. When I see teenage boys walking into an auto parts store asking for an alternator, and the clerk tells them, "Oh, it's over in the electric department," and they say, "No, no, I want an alternator." They don't even know that. They can't add. They have to, I've been in the grocery store, people who have been through Common Core, counting on their fingers. Me and another person in this room, we were very privileged. We went to a college prep high school, and that person is not allowing the kids in Washoe County to have that. No kid in this county should be wearing a mask. If you look, when people breathe with those masks on, they're sucking the mask back in their mouth. Why would you do that to kids? It affects their brains. You're intentionally causing harm, intentionally. And I think you have intentionally committed mass homicide too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snedeker.
Toni Pickrell.
Hello.
Ms. Pickrell.
Hi. Can I ask you guys questions? And if you agree, just raise your hands. This is for accountability. After all, you work for us, right?
It's for you to just speak, sir. You have the floor, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay. No pandemics last for three months. So you know this is a setup by Communist China to get rid of President Trump and the deep state, and that led to mail-in voting, so they can cheat. Okay? The insulting was about that. If you haven't done your research, well, you're not doing your due diligence. Okay? So about that, as we can see...
Ms. Pickrell.
I'm gonna talk to you, I'm gonna talk to the people here.
I need you to speak to the microphone if you're gonna do public comment, sir.
Okay.
And get it on the record. And you're supposed to address the commission as a whole, sir.
Well, I'm also addressing the people.
No, sir.
Because...
That's not how the public comment works. I'm sorry.
The way I see this, as you can see, most people spoke against this mask mandate and vaccine mandate for how many months now, over a year? You guys aren't gonna listen, so I'm addressing them, gonna tell them that you're not gonna give it back. In fact, it's your fault for letting them take it. Okay? You let them do it to you.
Please address the commission.
We have to take it back. They won't give it back. Okay?
Ms. Pickrell.
So we gotta get together and protest here in front of this office every day, because we will get more people to join us every day. That's the only thing, you understand, is numbers. People are working. We gotta make that money to pay your salary. Okay? I lost my job with this mandate, because I refused to wear a mask while I'm driving a bus. Okay? There's thousands of people like me that this happened to. Okay? So, again, they're not gonna give it to you. We had to take it back. And that's it. You won't be seeing me again, because I'm trying to gather our people to shout here in front of you guys every day. It's gonna build up slowly, but it's gonna happen. So you stop this foolishness now, or you're gonna get embarrassed.
Thank you, Ms. Pickrell.
Thank you.
Now, the callers on Zoom, we have Joshua Purdy, followed by Dan Purdy.
This is Amory Grant, for the record. Sorry, my nephew sometimes logs in under my Zoom. Amory Grant, sister of Thomas Purdy, murdered by Reno police officers Christopher Good, Jorge A. Parisio, Robert Maxwell, and David Tomlin. He was then dumped at your Washoe County Jail and asphyxiated to death while still hard-timed pleading for his life by Brendan Glenn, Paul Hubbell, Timothy Singer, and Andre Silva. Washoe County Sheriff's Office Sergeant Jason Wood is on administrative leave after his second DUI arrest. Sergeant Wood was arrested for DUI on April 30th and booked into the Washoe County Jail shortly before midnight and charged with DUI going 1 to 10 miles per hour over the speed limit and failure to maintain lanes. Woods was arrested for DUI previously in March of 2016. He was sentenced to complete nine hours of DUI school and attend a victim impact panel. He faced no repercussions from the sheriff's office. In August of the same year, Sergeant Wood initiated the traffic stop of Kyle Zimbalman that resulted in multiple officers unloading on Kyle and killing him. In 2017, Wood released his canine on a man after he surrendered to the police. The video of the attack of the community's member went viral and had well over a million views, and the taxpayers of Washoe County had to foot that bill for the lawsuit. You know, the one you throw on the consent agenda items, hoping to keep it under the rug. Sergeant Wood also shot and killed Robert Hampton III on 11/5/2014. Again, another death of a community member at the hands of police at Washoe DA Chris Hicks dragged his feet on releasing the report. The report was released 5/26/16, 568 days later. Washoe Sheriff Darren Balem recently said, "It's past time the whole law enforcement officers who tarnish our profession and oath accountable for deplorable actions." It's time for him to do that within his own department. I actually, when I was there last summer, ran into Sergeant Wood and tried to hold him accountable for his actions, and he just laughed at me. Thought it was funny, because he truly believes he's above the law. I'd like to mention the family of 36-year-old Ronalds and DeHaas, who was killed by Sparks Police a year ago. They're still waiting for DA Hicks' report, and Washoe County Sheriff's Office took the lead, and they need to release the video. So maybe you all can get together with your pal Sheriff Balem and tell him, "We want some transparency and accountability. Where is the video? It's been over a year." I'll leave you with my brother being murdered at the jail.
Next up, we have Dan Purdy, followed by Conrad Drews.
Yes, good morning. Daniel Purdy, for the record, brother of Thomas Purdy murdered at Washoe County Jail. I heard you guys talking about the homeless today and all the great things and accomplishments, you think you're succeeding it. I don't know the last time you guys took a walk through downtown Reno, but I certainly don't see anything getting better down there. You have your homeless getting drunk, falling down on the street, nobody helping them. Last year, when I was out there, I had to stop by several homeless people, well, your so-called, I guess, ambassadors down in downtown, do nothing to help these people. You see someone laying face down, and then you guys just walk by like they're absolutely nobody. That's just the dirt. Some of you must be talking about those supposed criminals that actually need the real help. And then to sit there and say, act like you guys know what's better for people, like someone should be on drug testing because you think it's good for them? First off, they should make all drugs legal, and then we wouldn't have half the problems we do in this country with bad heroin and things like that. So it's less about the actual drug addiction that you can actually help people with. All this other mumbo jumbo, it's all for the women, the children, which is all great things, but let's also consider the fact that there are men in this world too that also need help, and they also have children. There are single fathers out there. You guys have yourself a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Purdy.
Conrad Drews.
Good morning.
Mr. Drews, we lost you there for a second.
Oh, sorry. Here, wait.
Mr. Drews, you there?
I'm sorry, I had another computer next to me with the audio on. Good morning. I'm a student at Incline High School and a participant in our We the People team. I wanted to voice my support of the COVID mask mandates and implementation of the vaccines and point out to many of the people who are talking before me that what they're saying goes against my knowledge and experts' knowledge of health, the Constitution, and even like basic statistics. The group of people, like, passionate about a situation will obviously come and complain about it, while the people satisfied about it won't. So it's useless to point out that the people here talking don't like the situation. I also wanted to point out the hypocritical claims of, like, school indoctrination while that same group is using their kids as political mouthpieces here. And I wanted to thank you for your leadership as it relates to COVID and for enduring many of the people talking here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drews.
There's nobody else signed in.
All right, so no further public comment here in the chambers. We're on Zoom. We'll bring it back to the board. All right.
We are making progress. I think the creation of the Nevada CARES Campus and the collaboration between City of Reno, City of Sparks, and the county has been noticed by philanthropic organizations. So I hope to have more good news about that and more specifics next month. Second, I'd like to just acknowledge that I'm so proud of our Washoe County Communications Group. Last week, last Thursday, the Sierra Nevada Chapter of the Public Relations Society of America, PRSA, issued their annual Silver Spike Awards. Our very own Communications Department was recognized for our internal communications during the pandemic. So all of those, right? We also received the Bronze Spike Award, which is the second highest award you can receive for our communications during the elections, during the 2200 elections, with all the changes in polling places and pre-voting and all of those arrangements. We were recognized for that. Scott Ochsard, who you all know as the Health District's PIO, was recognized as a Communications Champion of the Year for his efforts in helping to inform the public what's going on. And last, but certainly not least, our very own Nancy Lewin Hagan, our Communications Director, received the Lifetime Achievement Award. And she's in the back of the chamber, so please join me and congratulate Nancy Lewin. To that end, I'm also happy to report that last week, let me back up. It has been very, one of the pushes that we've been trying to accomplish from an outreach perspective in this pandemic is reaching into communities of color and those that are disenfranchised. And I want to thank the Health District and our Communications Group again. They worked with the Health District and UNR and Faith in Action to hold a COVID vaccine clinic at St. Peter's Kinesius Church over in Sun Valley over the weekend. They were expecting about 150 doses to be administered, ended up distributing 450 doses in an amazing, it was actually one of our most successful remote pods outside of the livestock events center to date. So I want to acknowledge all those folks. As you all know, the test positivity rate is declining. It's now 4.8%, which is the first time, I believe, it's been below five. We're headed in the right direction, but I do want to encourage folks to continue to take the proper precautions as directed. Mr. Chair, that's all I have for this morning.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate it. Commissioners, I have Commissioner Jung signed in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The public speaker who spoke, who I believe is in Commissioner Hill's district about the islands that they are in, I think it's high time that this county looks again at their property because I believe islands are illegal. You cannot have islands in annexation. So what that means is a landmass island, oh, I'm looking at the expert. What I believe is you cannot island cities, spheres of influences, et cetera. So I need Mr. Edwards' briefing, probably for all of us, and what our next steps are because this is really a takings, I think. And I don't even care who they belong to. I don't care. Do you want to be in the city? Change is no difference to how much I get paid, whether you're in the city or the unincorporated county. We collect the same property tax, the same sales tax. It doesn't matter to me. But what we do need to do is clean up that map, which is a disaster, as far as I'm concerned, with these islands, and it is limiting personal property and private property rights. And as this gentleman pointed out, he can't even vote out or run against the people who potentially could change his land use development. So for me, I have no fight of who gets the property. I don't care. Just take it out of the island situation and the sphere of influence. I do need more information from that, from Mr. Edwards, and what new legalities have come up, and how much we want to continue this in these pocket island areas. That map needs to be cleaned up. Staff is not doing their job, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of telling us what to do for cleanup when we have these disjointed patchwork island situations of annexation. I believe that is in Commissioner Hill's district. It might be in Commissioner Herman's district, but it's much more of you than me, than this gal. I'm pretty urban, but the rest of you have some problems out there. And let's get ahead of it rather than being reactive to everything, getting dragged along, and it turns into a big pronounced argument. Just clean it up, easy peasy. If you need me to come in and work on nights and weekends, happy to do it. Again, I think it's another artificial intelligence thing that we could be programming this logarithm and spit them out. And probably we already have that, just nobody has recently asked. But that is something that we are at the prime level, especially with the way property is going right now and housing. Let's make it clean and clear for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Don't disagree with Commissioner Jung with respect to the SOI, although it is not an issue in District Four because I was able to convince the City of Sparks to roll back the SOI in the last master plan update at Regional. That said, it would be nice to have a presentation. The City of Reno has tenaciously held on to the SOI, and really, we have the underlying land use, and then they have the overlying ability to dictate what can and cannot happen. It is very wrong in this particular case. I think that there is a good, let me rephrase. I think there is a good argument that these people will never agree to be annexed, and so the city would be forced to forcibly annex them, which I just don't think would occur. And when we bring this back, I believe that under the agreement, that they have to abide by the zoning that currently exists on the property. So when you bring this back to us, Mr. Edwards, I'd like to just look at what legal remedies we have to force the city to roll back the SOI in many of these places where it will never be annexed, ever. It's just not going to, and the people don't want to be annexed. Another note, Mr. Manager, I don't disagree with many of the speakers who said that they were questioned about their status in terms of vaccine. That bothers me. I believe that we should put a note on the door, put a sign on the door that just asks people, if you have not been vaccinated, please wear your mask, and if you have been vaccinated, it's fine. I think that that's adequate. To ask people, I think, is an infringement, and that's my opinion. I'm still waiting to hear when we are going to change the name of the Health District from Washoe County to Northwestern Nevada. People still think that these mandates are done by the county commission. They have not been done by the county commission. And that needs to be distinct. They need to be a distinct organization. If the health officer wants to continue with these mandates, that's fine, but I don't feel that they're viable at this point. We all agree that we would follow CDC guidelines, and that's exactly what we're doing. So there's my two cents. I'm broke.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Jung, I have you sign back in.
I picked up your two cents. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. To the Vice Chairman's point, I think that, you know, we've never been in this position before, so missteps are made all the time. But I happen to agree with the Vice Chairman. We are basically, as we have this entire 14 months, asking you to voluntarily take personal responsibility for yourself and others, Scouts honor or American honor, patriotic honor, whatever you want to call it, that you have integrity, that you have social responsibility. Either you do or you don't. So if you're unvaccinated, and I know many of you were proudly unvaccinated last week, but now you're suddenly vaccinated, which doesn't fit even the six-week program, so not true, but to me, this really has always been voluntarily done. We've never offered a ticket, didn't get a sheriff to back that, nor governor. So for me, I will never wear a green dot again. I don't know where that idea came from. I know it was done with good intent, but I'm fully vaccinated. And there are people that put on the public record they'd never come around me again, because I am vaccinated, and that I'm omitting, you know, whatever I'm omitting. So to me, this is just a real act of your own personal integrity to hear and how much you believe you owe it as a patriot to America and your fellow citizens to comply with civility and decorum. But I agree, Mr. Vice Chairman, and I know I asked the ignorant question of you, and I apologize in the hallway. It was a stupid joke. I'm known for those. But yeah, I mean, to say as a Jewish woman, to tell me it's equivalent to the Star of David, I mean, that is beyond. But I'm just looking at everybody here, bring your integrity to the table, because I love seeing it. And my integrity is here, too, and I'll go back to wearing a mask if it is told to me by the Centers of Disease and Control, the highest scientists in all of the world, that that's the right thing to do. That's the way that I live in my life. And I want to thank the Incline Village student who's coming up next for a proclamation because I've been really worried here in that with less than one-half, a 1% of population of a half a million in Washoe County telling me I got to open, I'm really concerned about what level of education people are getting in Nevada and K through 12 because basic science seems to be really lacking, and it makes me nervous. As an American citizen, it makes me very nervous, and that is why, no matter what the school district does, I will never stop supporting it, no matter where I live, because K through 12 is so important. But what's more important, that you retain K through 12. I think a lot of people forgot a lot of important things, and I don't know why you went to school. I'm going to get off this lecture, but I remember everything because I went to school because it was my job as a kid. And if you don't remember stuff, you might want to audit some classes, and I don't mean that to be a jerk. I mean it like, we need to catch up a little bit here because this is a hard conversation to have with the community that we can't even agree that two and two is, two and two equals four. So, Mr. Chairman, I agree with the Vice Chairman about the green dot. I don't believe it's the Star of David, but I also believe we are asking you, on Scouts honor or whatever, integrity, you put your honor in God's honor, Jesus's honor, Vishnu's honor, that you are maintaining your integrity. That's all I can ask of a fellow human being, no matter where I'm at on this planet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Anything else from any of the commissioners? I do want to take a minute to, this week, we are hosting, thankfully, through the resources that we have available, we are hosting the Western States Sheriff's Association here again. So sheriffs from across the western region, from Idaho, Montana, Wyoming, Nevada, Utah, New Mexico, Arizona, and Colorado are all here to convene this week and discuss, and they're at the Pepper Mill, participation and participating in discussions, and our own Sheriff Balem helped open that this morning or yesterday, and that was a big honor for him. Also, yesterday, we had the grand opening of the CARES Campus, which we are anxiously and hopefully, very hopeful, will be a much-needed resource for many of those individuals within our community, and so we can continue to address that need of those experiencing homelessness throughout our region. I do want to work on some of the discussions that we had today. Obviously, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is an issue, and I know, Mr. Manager, you just brought that up, and that's very positive in regards to that. But really have some more in-depth conversations about what we can do as that pertains to potential land on the NAMs Campus and some future issues there. So with that, those are my comments, and I have nothing further for anybody this morning. But in seeing nothing else signed in, we will close item six and bring it back to the board and move on to item seven. Mr. Manager.
Item seven is proclamations, Mr. Chair.
All right. And so proclamation seven A, and I want to also welcome our previous county manager, Ms. Katie Simon-Holland. She is here joining us today to receive a proclamation, so I'm sure she'll come down and join Ms. Christian Hill after the proclamation. So come on down, Ms. Coe, come on. Not only has she been a wonderful county manager, but has also served as a public servant. So thank you for your service, ma'am. So with that, Commissioner Hill, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just would like to say on a personal note, I went through the We the People program and went to Nationals, not during a pandemic, and did not place. We had a lot of fun in DC as high school seniors. It was one of the most memorable things that I did in my high school career and taught me so much about the Constitution and long-lasting lessons about government. And truly, I believe that I am here as a commissioner today because of We the People. And so to the students who, I'm not sure if they're able to watch this, just continue that path of learning and knowledge, and I'm just so proud of what our students have been able to do and this huge achievement at the Nationals during a pandemic. So I will start the proclamation. Whereas, We the People is a rigorous course of study where students learn knowledge, skills, and depositions that are essential to becoming an effective student. Whereas, students compete in mock congressional hearings and testify before judging panels that include scholars, educators, judges, and justices, state lawmakers, attorneys, state and local officials. And whereas the class demands close teamwork, perseverance, trust, and integrity as students play important roles in the presentations and must rely on their classmates to do their part. And whereas two classes of students from schools in the Washoe County School District have placed among the top 12 teams in the nation in the We the People Civics Competition, whereas the class of Reno High School placed third in the country, third. And whereas the class from Incline High School placed eighth, amazing. And whereas Richard Clark teaches social studies at Reno High School and coaches the school's We the People team, and Milton Himes, who teaches US government and coaches Incline High School's team. And whereas, this is the first time in Washoe County School District history that two teams have placed in the top 12 of this prestigious annual competition. Whereas, students testify before panels of judges to present and debate their positions on questions surrounding the US Constitution. And whereas, both instructors noted that their students found new ways to celebrate and encourage each other, even when they couldn't gather in person during the pandemic due to COVID, health, and safety protocols in schools. Both also mentioned the challenges of teaching current events during the tumultuous time in American history. Now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim April 26, 2021, as We the People Day in Washoe County, signed by our chairman, Bob Lucy. And I know that Katie is here, and I'm hoping she'll say a few words, and I think that Andrew Jockseimer from Incline High School, the principal of Incline High School, is also on Zoom, and perhaps he'll say a few words.
Ms. Simon-Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, for the record, Katie Simon-Holland, senior strategic, very senior now, Strategic Advisor for EDON, the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada, and, as you know, former president of the Washoe County School Board. Commissioners, Mr. Manager, it's great to see all of you here today, and I want to thank you for your public service. I know how hard it is, what you do. I've sat at the dais, and I've sat in the manager's chair, and I just want to compliment you on your leadership and your support, not only for the great programs we heard about in the first agenda item, but also for your leadership throughout this last year's very difficult pandemic protocol. So thank you for that. And I'm here today on behalf of EDON and our community of business leaders and investors to really thank you for your support for this resolution to honor these outstanding students at Reno High School and Incline High School, and to thank their teachers. thank you for your public service. I know how hard it is, what you do. I've sat at the dais, and I've sat in the manager's chair, and I just want to compliment you on your leadership and your support, not only for the great programs we heard about in the First Agenda item, but also for your leadership throughout this last year's very difficult pandemic protocol. So thank you for that. And I'm here today on behalf of EDON and our community of business leaders and investors to really thank you for your support for this resolution to honor these outstanding students at Reno High School and Incline High School, and to thank their teachers, their family members. The kids have done a great job, but it takes a huge support system to make the We the People program happen. I had the privilege of being a coach and judge, not a coach, a judge, for previous We the People competitions. And I can tell you, I was humbled, to say the least, by the knowledge that these young people have about the Constitution, the Federalist Papers, case law, judicial decisions, reflecting the importance of our democracy and our democratic principles. They are absolutely outstanding leaders. And of course, Commissioner Hill is evidence of the importance of that, pardon me, that training. These young people go on to be senators, they go on to be congressional leaders, they go on to be lawyers and judges, and they also go on to be people who teach others about the importance of the true basis of our Constitution, not interpretations that have come to pass over the years, but the true basis of the leadership of our country and our fine democracy. So again, it's just an honor to be here, and thank you so much for your support for these young people. They are extraordinary. And thank you, Commissioner Hill, for your leadership in helping to support this as well. And big thank you to the Washoe County Communications Staff and the staff at the Washoe County School District that helped to put this together today. And congratulations, Ms. Lewin-Hagan. I get the honor of having hired her at Washoe County and stealing her away from the school district. So thank you to all of you.
We thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Simon-Holland. You know, we are joined by the principal today, Andrew Yoxheimer, from Incline High School. He is joining us via Zoom today. Before we get started, Mr. Yoxheimer was my civics teacher, my sophomore year at Columbia High School. Yeah, it was last year. And he was one of those individuals atop me government and in history of this United States. So, Mr. Yoxheimer, are you on the phone, sir?
I am on the Zoom. There you go. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir. Great, sir. It's nice to hear your voice.
Nice to see you. Nice to hear your voice. I didn't realize that was you, though. So you just mentioned that.
And he was a great ski coach, too, just to sign that.
Because I did my job. You went into civics.
There you go.
Job well done on my part, I guess. Well, thank you, guys, for this opportunity. And really, it's an honor to be the principal of Incline High School and such an outstanding staff with so many amazing students up here. I really want to give a shout out to our We the People team. They did an amazing job this year. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, normally what a team will have up to 24 students, they're six units, you can have four students per unit. Our team this year was only 10 kids. So every student had to be on at least two units. And each unit is just huge amounts of preparation work, research, and just a deep, deep understanding of the Constitution, in the philosophical foundations of our country. So our teacher, Mr. Himes, and our other We the People coach, Amy Henderson-Sites, both did an amazing job this year. They do an amazing job every year. But this being one of our highest finishes ever in a really challenging year, what a just a tremendous job they did this year. And it's really, really honored that the county is honoring the We the People students. And I'll give a shout out to the Reno High School, Mr. Hackbush and their team. They obviously have an outstanding team every year. It's a slugfest between Reno and Incline every year. And Reno got the better of us this year, but there's always next year. We'll be back. So thank you again for this, for the proclamation and the recognition of the hard work of our students. It's been a tremendous year for them. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yoxheimer. And we'll make sure that you get, Principal Yoxheimer, we'll make sure you get that proclamation. We'll send it up to you. And we want to congratulate all of your students as well that participated. Principal Chris Hackbush was supposed to attend today, but was unfortunately unable to make it. But we also want to make sure that we extend our congratulations and just complete awe with all the work that the students at both Reno and Incline High Schools participated. And to bring Northern Nevada into such a national light is a big, big step. And we appreciate that. And we're happy to honor your students. So thank you, everybody. A big round of applause. Mr. Manager, we are on to our next proclamation. And I would ask those that are here for the proclamations, please, if you could stay, we're going to take photos after we read through the proclamations, and we'll adjourn really quick. So with that, we have Commissioner Jung.
Thank you.
Oh, and you want to take it in?
Yeah, Item Seven B is Older Americans Month. We have Commissioner Jung and Steve McBride, Senior Services Director in chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. Chairman, and the commission up here with me. I have senior services staff who make the magic happen. And I have a senior services board member and chairwoman, vice chairwoman now, Donna Clontz, who has been probably the most committed to senior citizens as a, way before she was a senior citizen, actually. I don't even know if you are a senior citizen, Ms. Clontz. I cannot tell age anymore at all. I don't know what it means exactly. I got an AARP letter, though, and I'm only 48, so I don't know what it means.
I see. This is all of us.
So let me read this. Whereas, the Washoe County Human Services Agency Senior Services Division served thousands of seniors in need of support, resources, and referrals to community-based programs and case management during 2020. And whereas, the Human Service Agency Senior Services Division is committed to engaging and supporting older adults, their families, and caregivers through its vision to ensure every senior is living and aging well. And whereas, the Human Services Agency Senior Services Division served 2,200 seniors, more than 371,000 home-delivered meals in 2020, which is 30,000 more meals than in 2019. And whereas, the COVID-19 outbreak, Human Service Agency Senior Services Division enrolled 1,235 new seniors in the Home Meal Delivery Program. And whereas, 14 additional delivery routes were created for emergency temporary meal delivery, and senior staff and volunteers provided grocery and other critical household supplies during the pandemic. And whereas, seniors were served nearly 100,000 meals through the Congregate Meal Program, which transitioned from traditional service to a to-go meal service on March 17, 2020 due to the pandemic. And whereas, the Human Services Agency Senior Services Division will continue to provide quality service to Washoe County's most vulnerable seniors during the pandemic and well after, as we celebrate May as Older Americans Month through various virtual events, as to ensure the safety and health of every senior HSA serves. And now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2021 as Older Americans Month. The Human Service Agency asks the community to take a moment and appreciate and recognize our Washoe County seniors. And this is signed by our fair chair, Robert Lucy. And I will tell you, as a daughter of senior, they would say they're senior citizens, they'll be 85 this year. One thing I think we forget in this culture is how valuable those people that have lived through everything really are, and how much more wisdom and knowledge and steady on they're able to provide us. And we tend to, and we learn a lot from our Native American brothers and sisters, too, but we tend to, as Americans and as pure capitalists, to kind of throw away old people. And I'm so proud that this county has stood up as long as I've been a county commissioner, going on 14 years, in August, has never shied away from innovative ideas, like Ms. Clontz does, and even staff who has to figure out, usually on the fly, how to service individuals and whole communities who might be struggling with different language barriers. We have socioeconomic issues that make us unable to communicate with each other. And I've always found the HSA staff to be ready to work and ready to address these needs, in spite of the fact that honestly, I think we give them a pittance to run their program. We don't go out and recruit seniors for our programs because we don't have the bandwidth from it. But one thing Donna Clontz and the staff and the senior advisory board has done is to make sure senior issues, the longest taxpayers amongst us, no matter where they grew up and lived and died or whatever, the longest taxpayers are getting a return in so much as we are honoring them, knowing that they're vulnerable, and that we will not stand in a county as human beings to allow senior citizens to fall through the cracks. And this is because of these heavy lifts behind me. And I am so proud of that. I can't tell you enough how proud I am of this community. I'm proud that our chair is Native American, because I think he's got a better sense of that, too. I'm just an average American mongrel that grew up with no Native American influence other than in California. But I think that shows a lot, too, Mr. Chairman, your commitment to that, because you come from a tradition that elders are revered and honored and praised, and they get the last bite, not us the first bite. And I'm so proud that I have, I live in this county, and that these people do the heavy, heavy lifting for our very most vulnerable citizens in Washoe County. So I will leave that to Ms. Clontz, and then you can introduce the staff, if you don't mind, because you're our super senior. This woman wins every gold medal event at the senior event.
Sometimes. Let me introduce Steve McBride, who is the director for our senior services and adult services, who has a few words to say. And Abby, we're going to go with Will Rich, who is the lead social worker for our senior services program. And then I'll, I've got a few words later, too. So.
Thank you, Donna.
Yours.
Welcome, Steve.
Good morning. Thank you very much for, good afternoon. Thank you for having us. And wow, what a year it's been. This year's Older Americans Month theme is communities of strength and how appropriate. I can remember just a little over a year ago, the team at senior services got together, and we were like, okay, how are we going to do this? Because people still need food. People still have needs. And we just had to figure out how to do it different. And we started planning for reopening on March 17 of 2020. And each week, each month, and everything that we went through as a community, we worked together to try to figure out how to keep everybody's needs intact while we adjusted and planned for the unknown. And here we are, you know, 14-ish months later, heading in the right direction, thankfully, but it's been, it's been a very trying time, particularly for our seniors. And our seniors have been with us every step of the way. And so we've had a lot of voice and people saying, don't forget about us. We have needs, and we're here. And so I really appreciate the ongoing support that the commission has given to our seniors of Washoe County. Although we weren't able to plan for promoting and hosting traditionally our Older American Month events as we would have in years past, we did have some creativity and lots of stakeholder partnership to create an excellent lineup of virtual events, as mentioned in the proclamation. And those can be viewed on our Washoe County TV YouTube channel. We are returning to hosting our Senior Donation Drive this Friday at Sam's Club on the 21st from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's in partnership with Colo Cares, Sam's Club, Cities of Reno and Sparks, Regional Transportation Commission, and our senior advisory boards. And our goal is to stuff RTC bus full of community donations for the needs of seniors. And so we've had a lot of success with that in the past, and we hope people will come out and support that much-needed event for seniors, because those items benefit seniors all throughout the entire year. And May was a milestone for us as well this year, because it marked us taking the next step towards reopening. We reopened our centers at up to 50% capacity as part of our soft reopening. Took us a little bit of time to get back on track and get people back into the building, engaged with services. But I will mention, we never stopped, as mentioned by the number of our home-delivered meals last year, we never stopped. And we've never been busier in our home-delivered meal program as well. We now welcome seniors to dine with us in our congregate dining. And we've also reopened our daybreak program. So we're excited to welcome clients and families back into the buildings so that they can get that support as well. And last but not least, and I said it in the beginning, but I want to just, again, really appreciate our dedicated senior staff. They've overcome a tremendous amount of adversity, the volunteers as well. We couldn't do it without them. And again, never missed a day of delivery through the entire pandemic. So thank you again for your ongoing support. And I'll introduce Abby Wilrich.
Abby Wilrich, for the record. It's been an incredible year. Steve pretty much said anything that I would say, but I do want to give kudos to the staff, because they're the ones who made it happen. Our home-delivered meal program, our day, we never skipped a day. We did form relationships throughout the community. We were able to partner with two different tribes over the pandemic who had COVID-19 outbreaks. And so we had to serve meals to those communities as well, which we were able to do overnight, which is great. We got an additional freezer this year, which was really helpful through some CARES money. So I think that's it.
I wanted to thank the commission for always supporting the senior community here in Washoe County, and also all of you and all the hard work that's gone into all the health support that we've all gotten from the county throughout this pandemic situation. I really appreciated the words we heard from the young man this morning, and the understanding he has, at least, of science and health and what will keep all of us safe. So I appreciate the work and the thought that goes into everything that you do on all parts of running our county government to make things better for all of us. The senior advisory board for the county continued to meet. We quit for a few months, but we came back on Zoom during the summer. And we've been meeting every month, talking about senior issues, supporting the staff. We came up with a calling program, a volunteer calling program, and quite a few of us and a few of the senior community became Washoe volunteers to call seniors who are at home and lonely, who need just someone to talk to. We also conducted a few surveys to find out what seniors are thinking about, what services they want, what they know about, what they'd like to know more about. We're conducting one right now that's asking seniors what they'd like to see inside the buildings when COVID restrictions are lifted, so that we can go back to doing social and recreation activities inside our county services that kind of go along with those, with the meals that bring all the social interaction together. So we thank you for the support for seniors. We're so glad that Older Americans Month continues to happen here in Washoe County, and that we have activities to enjoy and to introduce to the seniors that are out there in the community, and to support stuff a bus this Friday. So we hope we see some of you. Pass the word. We'd like to see lots of folks driving by and dropping off things for our most in-needs seniors. Thanks again.
Thank you. Ms. Clontz, and Commissioner Jung is absolutely right. The work that you, the three of you and your staff do is tremendous. And I think that, Abby, you hit on it perfectly. Not just, we weren't just delivering meals to these individuals, but we were developing relationships. For many of these people, that was the only personal interaction. For a lot of them got for an entire year is when those meals. And so those drivers, those deliveries, were more than just a delivery for a few. They were a friendly smile, a nice comment, some reassurance that their people were still there. So you do so much more than just the basics that people see on the outside. So thank you for all of your work. Donna, you've done a tremendous job. And Steve, thank you. So we appreciate it. All right. Stick around. We're going to grab a picture here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we are on to Item Seven C, and we have Commissioner Herman, who is going to read this proclamation. So, Mr. Manager, will you please bring that in? And I believe we have Ms. Samantha Pierce.
Yes.
There she is.
Seven C is to proclaim the month of May 2021 as International Internal Audit Awareness Month. That's a tongue twister.
Right there. Commissioner Herman.
That is a tongue twister. Right. Whereas, internal auditing is an independent, objective assurance and consulting activity designed to add value and improve an organization's operations. Whereas, internal auditors are explorers, analysts, problem solvers, reporters, and trusted advisors. Today's internet internal audit professionals are revered for their critical thinking and communication skills, as well as industry-specific business knowledge. And whereas, professional internal auditors agree to abide by a code of ethics that upholds the principles of integrity, objectivity, confidentiality, and competency. They raise red flags when they discover improper conduct. And whereas, internal auditors with a solid understanding of the organization's objectives examines the operations to determine whether they are efficient and effective. And whereas, internal audit investigates they are efficient and effective. And whereas, internal audit investigates possible fraudulent behavior throughout the organization with access to all records and the authority to conduct audits at any level of the organization. And whereas, internal auditors stand as the third line of defense and are nimble with the broadest view of organizational risk. Internal audit is here to help the other lines mitigate risk and to be the last line of defense that catches a risk even before it crosses the line to be detected by external assessors. And whereas, internal auditors and supporters across America are celebrating International Internal Audit Awareness Month. Now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 2021 as International Internal Audit Awareness Month and encourages all residents and employees to get to know the vital role internal audit plays at all times. It's all-in-a-day's work for internal auditors around the world.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Ms. Pierce?
Thanks, Commissioner Samantha Pierce, for the record. I just wanted to say thank you for recognizing the importance of internal audit in our awesome organization that we have here. I am your fearless internal auditor, Department of One.
Yes, she is.
And I also wanted to do a special thanks to Commissioner Herman and Commissioner Hill for sitting on the audit committee that we have. And just let you guys know that, you know, our passion provides this county with the assurance and insight and objectivity. And we do that all through independence. And that is why we have the audit committee, who have public members on their board. And if anyone has any questions or wants to know any more about internal audit, we do have a website off of the Office of the County Manager's website that they can go to and find out more information about internal audit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Herman and Ms. Pierce. Next, we're on to item 7D.
Item 7D is to proclaim the week of May 16th to the 23rd, 2021, as National Public Works Week.
And Vice Chair Hartung is going to be reading this proclamation. I believe he will be joined by our own Dwayne Smith from our Community Services Department to accept that.
Dylan, Dwayne.
Loaded in the team.
We've got the whole crew here. You know, this is something that's near and dear to my heart. You know, we talk about public infrastructure. When we think about public infrastructure, we think about water, sewer, roads. You know, we turn on the tap, we want water to come out. When we flush the toilet, we want it to go someplace other than back up in our homes or out onto the street, of course. When we drive somewhere, we expect good roads and et cetera. And it's hard. One of the very frustrating things for me is that we are horribly underfunded across the nation, by the way. But those are just a small group of the pieces of infrastructure that these folks deal with. You know, they deal with stormwater, they deal with buildings. The police and fire would not be able to respond without these professionals making sure that we have good facilities, our emergency operations center, et cetera. I mean, there are so many things, our ME's office across the street, this building itself. So this is really quite an honor for me, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Washoe County, Nevada proclamation, whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Washoe County. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals like them, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of governments and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it's in the public interest for all citizens, civic leaders, and children in Washoe County to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest in the understanding of the importance of public works and the public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. And now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 23rd, 2021, as National Public Works Weeks and urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. It's dated this 18th day of May 2021, and it's signed by the hand of our chairman, Robert Lucy. Mr. Smith, would you introduce this fine group?
I'd be happy to do that, Vice Chair. For the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering and Capital Projects in the Community Services Department. And you see before you just a very small slice of the public works people that work in the Community Services Department that bring the value to our area, that bring the infrastructure to allow for our residents to enjoy the quality of life that they get. So I have Megan Seislove. Megan is also, just wanted to quickly point out.
Come up here, Megan. You have to, because they're going to get you on camera otherwise.
Megan is the chair of the Northern Branch of the American Public Works Association for Nevada. So I just wanted to give her a chance to say a few things as well. Tim Simpson is one of our engineers. He's been in the utility for, I think, since he started as an intern, and is definitely one of the success stories. And I think Washoe County has done a great job, and Tim has done a great job for Washoe County. I'll jump over to Dylan real quick. Dylan is one of our senior engineers also in our utility and has brought a lot of experience from the Seattle area down and has been on our team for about four years. Ben Hutchins is our Director of Finance. And I just wanted to take a quick second, and I know Ben, he'll probably be disappointed, I'm going to jump in here, but as all the public works staff that help deliver these projects, just a quick shout out to the administrative staff. We can't do anything without them. And the finance staff, those two groups right there are critical to our success. So I just wanted to do a quick little shout out specifically to that group. So Megan, please.
Good morning, good afternoon. Megan Seislove, for the record. On behalf of the Northern Nevada Branch of APWA, I just wanted to acknowledge all of our support that we get from you folks here on the Commission with your leadership. Also, it's important to recognize the staff that's out there on the day-to-day basis, doing everything they do for us. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Come on, Ben, you're already seen.
Jim?
All right. Thank you, guys. We do appreciate it and all the work you've been doing.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I interject while these folks, that, you know, when you saw the Our Place presentation earlier, what a lot of folks don't realize is our Community Services Department played an integral role in transforming those buildings on the NAMs campus into what is now, right? And I just want to acknowledge those folks, because the same process and the same skills will help us transform the Nevada Cares Campus into what it needs to be. We're going to get a shell, and that's great, but I'm just blown away by the competency of these folks and their willingness to help us with those things. Okay, we're on to item 7E, which is to proclaim the month of May through October 2021 as both the Nevada Wildfire Awareness Campaign and as the Lake Tahoe Wildfire Awareness Campaign.
Mr. Lucy, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and Commissioner. It is my honor to stand up in front of you today. We do have Division Chief Augie Eisenhagen, who is our Wildland Fuels Management Expert for Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, or should I say Truckee Meadows Fire and Rescue. You know, and this is, as many of us sit through here and have participated in these meetings, or just live in this community, we realize, especially in the Western United States, how devastating wildfires can be. From whether it's in a timbered area, the smoke that we have to experience from that. Over the last decade, almost every year, we've seen significant wildfires, hundreds, if not thousands, that are impacting not only our state, our community, but our entire country. And it's more important today than ever, especially here in northern Nevada, that we are understanding of the nature of wildfire and the drought situations that we constantly incur. So whether we have a wonderful wet summer, wet winter usually brings lots of fuels in the springtime that eventually will dry out. Or if we do not have a wet winter, those fuels that will carry over from the year prior are just as brittle as ever come early in the season. And it's through, so we all have to be a little bit more cognizant about what we do when we're out inside, outside in the wilderness to do that. So through this, we want to make sure that we have a proclamation to identify these awareness campaigns that not only our Fire Protection District here in Truckee Meadows is participating in, but also North Lake Tahoe and UNR through Cooperative Extension also does a number of different programs from Living with Fire. And Jamie Royce-Gomes is joining us from UNR and Cooperative Extension, and she'll say a few minutes, a few words in just a minute. So it is my honor to read to you this proclamation today. Whereas wildfires significantly impact Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being. And whereas, the residents of Nevada's fire-prone communities need to accept the responsibility for living in high-fire-hazard areas. And whereas, residents can save precious time in an evacuation by preparing a go-bag and a family evacuation plan ahead of time. And whereas, residents must prepare to survive a wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding their home and the appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition. And whereas, residents need to work together to prepare their homes and communities to survive wildfire and commit to being fire-adapted. Now, therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the period of May through October 2021 as a national Nevada wildfire awareness campaign. This means an education for all residents of Washoe County to act to reduce wildfire threat, prepare for wildfire, and become fire-adapted. Signed by myself, Robert Lucy, Chair, Washoe County Commission. And like I said, we have Division Chief Eisenhagen here with us from Truckee Meadows to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of Truckee Meadows Fire and Rescue, we would like to thank Living with Fire, as well as fire-adapted communities, for their tremendous effort in helping raise awareness to our residents throughout Washoe County and the state of Nevada on steps they can take to reduce the destruction caused by wildfires. We look forward to working with them and all of our regional fire partners for the next several months on this important initiative.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. And we are joined by, is Ms. Royce-Gomes on the Zoom? Ms. Gomes?
Hi.
Ms. Royce-Gomes, hi, how are you?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Fantastic. Nice to hear your voice.
Thank you. So wildfire can actually threaten Nevada and Lake Tahoe communities and impact homes, properties, and human life. The key to minimizing the wildfire impact are proactive communities that take steps to prepare and become fire-adapted. Now, in response to wildfire, representatives of Nevada and Lake Tahoe's local, state, and federal firefighting agencies, wildfire-prone communities, the Tahoe Resource Conservation District, and University of Nevada Reno Extension have conducted an annual wildfire awareness campaign since 2006. Now, as we know, wildfire can threaten communities at any time of the year. As we have seen in Washoe County, there was the Washoe Drive Fire in 2012 that occurred in January. This year's campaign is extended from a one-month campaign to a six-month campaign. So we would like to raise awareness and preparedness for May through October. And so I'm going to share some general tips for folks to become prepared and fire-adapted. Ensuring that the first five feet away from your home are free of combustible materials, such as wood piles, wood mulch, dried leaves, pine needles, flammable shrubs like sagebrush and juniper. Instead, we recommend having high moisture content plants like tulips or irises, succulents. We recommend having the use of rock or concrete, brick or pavers. We recommend having a home inventory. You can either sign up with an app and take pictures of items from your home and have it downloaded in that app, or you can take a paper copy of a home inventory and place it in an offsite, preparing an evacuation go-bag for your household, and preparing for an evacuation plan. We recommend connecting with your neighbors to encourage community projects, to reduce the wildfire threat, and even registering your home and cell phones for your local emergency response system. In Washoe County, we utilize Code RED. So you can go to the Washoe County website and register for that system there. And so really, all year long, we encourage you and the community to prepare for wildfire. And you can either do that by looking at our website, livinwithfire.com. We do have different webinars available. We're doing one to two webinars this month through October. We had a wildfire evacuation preparedness webinar last week. And then we're going to have a webinar partnering with the Washoe County Health Department Air Quality and the National Weather Service. We're going to be talking about how to prepare for wildfire smoke and the impacts of that. Or you can even talk to your local fire service representative. So I really want to thank Chief Eisenhagen and Tia Rancourt. She's the PIO at the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District for partnering with us and being amazing partners. I'm going to hand this over next to Tia Rancourt.
Perfect. Thank you. Tia?
Good afternoon. Thank you. On behalf of the North Lake Tahoe Fire Protection District, our Fire Chief Ryan Summers, and the Lake Tahoe Basin, we appreciate your support, Commissioners, with this proclamation today for the Lake Tahoe Wildfire Awareness Campaign, which focuses on the concept of home hardening, defensible space, and becoming fire-adapted. As we all anticipate an active fire season, we all know how important it is to elevate awareness and educate our citizens, and we just really appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rancourt. We do appreciate you joining us today. And so many of our communities are impacted by this. So please, take this into consideration. Make sure that you're fire-prepared. Make sure that those evacuation routes are ready to go. You never think you're going to need it. However, our community unfortunately has seen how necessary it is over the last few years. From the Little Valley Fire to the fires out in Spanish Springs and out in Windermucka Ranch area, we've had fires just about everywhere. And it's important for our community to be ready. So, all right, with that, I will turn it back over to you, Commissioner, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manager?
We're on to item eight.
Pictures. Let's do pictures, yeah, absolutely. So would you like us to recess, Mr. Chair? Okay, so I'm going to put us into recess for about five or so minutes while we make photographs, which will be seen online. Okay, we're in recess. Okay, we're in recess.
Does so much that in addition to the property tax override that we passed in 2001, people still are giving money to Regional Animal Services because they believe what it provides in this community is an indication of the quality of life that we live and to what extent we take care of the very most vulnerable, which I would have to argue are children, animals, seniors, and people with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. These are donations, so is there any public comment on this, Madam?
There is no public comment.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'm looking for a motion. Is that a form of a motion? Commissioner Jung? I have a motion from Commissioner Jung. I have a second from the Vice Chairman. I will see no further public comment. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. Please affirm your votes on the screen. And we do thank all those individuals for all their generous donations. All right, we're on to item nine. Mr. Manager, this is our consent agenda. Commissioners, is there anything within the consent agenda that would need further detail or questions on? And if not, look for a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Hill, second from Vice Chair Harton. Is there any public comment on these items, Madam Clerk?
There's nobody signed in.
Seeing no public comment, we will close public comment. And I'll call for the vote with a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed. Motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. All right, Mr. Vice Chair, do we have a block vote today?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your consideration, I have only two items this week. Items 10 and 11.
All right, I have a motion for items 10 and 11 for a block vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hill. Mr. Manager, will you read those items into the record, sir?
Item 10 is a recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for the Reno Justice Court Hearing Room Project to remodel existing space into a multipurpose hearing room and add a separate county court resource assistance center for use by the public. Staff recommends Sullivan Structures LLC in the amount of $259,610. Approve the bid, alternative number one, in amount to be added to the base bid for alternative materials, alternate materials, and/or methods of construction in the amount of $67,545 for an open office area. Then to approve a separate contingency fund in the amount of $27,247. And also to approve the purchase of furniture fixtures and equipment in the amount of $146,960.76 for a total project amount of $501,362.76. This project will be funded through the Reno Justice Court. Item number 11 is a recommendation to approve a reorganization of the county manager's office and associated position changes effective July 1, 2021 to conclude reinstating job classification, Director of Finance, and retitling to Chief Financial Officer, the reclassification of an Assistant County Manager, pay grade M-100. Position to Chief Financial Officer, pay grade MZZ. Position as evaluated and approved by the Washoe County Job Evaluation Process and authorize Human Resources and the Comptroller to make all necessary changes, realign the Chief Information Officer, Director of Human Resources, Labor Relations, and registrar voters to report directly to the county manager with a net fiscal impact of $0 and align the special projects manager and staff, including the Homeless Services Group and Grants Management, to report under-Assistant County Manager Kate Tappas.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on these items?
There's nobody signed in.
All right, we see no further public comment. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Jung voted aye from the back. So motion carries unanimously with all Commissioners voting. We are on to item, we're going to do, we'll jump to item 12, sir.
Item 12 is a legislative update. It's a discussion and direction to staff regarding legislation or legislative issues proposed by legislators by Washoe County, Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, or by other entities permitted by the Nevada State Legislature to submit bill draft requests or such legislative issues as may be deemed by the Chair or the Board to be of critical significance to Washoe County.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. Everybody was provided with a report today in regards to the legislative issues in which we're working on. The biggest thing that I'd like to bring to everybody's attention, we are in the last final two weeks of session. Signee die is going to be on May 31st. We are really trying to finish budgets, so there wasn't much changes this week from last week. They are just finishing, trying to get bills through both houses and on to the floors for floor votes and tighten up the budget. And with some last-minute changes, they've been more focused on that than the bills. So based upon the bills that we have been presented, as you can see on those first two pages, those are the bills of support, and those are those we are in opposition of. We are still watching, but nothing major to report this week. Hopefully, maybe next week, we might have a little bit more detail as some more bills will go to the Governor's Office for passage, and hopefully we will see what comes out of this session as a whole and have a better understanding. Commissioner Hill, do you have anything that you'd like to add this week? Is there any questions for the manager or anything in regard outside of this? All right, seeing none, and there's no reason for any kind of action on this today, but I will call for public comment. Madam Clerk, was there any public comment? Sign in for the legislation.
There's nobody signed in.
Aye, great. We will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Now, we are on to the meat of our agenda. Item 13, Mr. Manager.
Item 13 is a discussion and possible action on the county manager.
Nope, sorry.
We're going to wait?
We are going to wait on that, hold on.
Okay.
I jumped ahead. We're going to go to, or I should have said, I should have jumped ahead. We're going to jump right into the public hearing first. This is item 14. This is the budget item. We would want to go into the budget first. So with that, Mr. Manager, I will open the public hearing. Will you please take us into that?
Item 14 is the public hearing discussion and possible action on the Washoe County tentative budget as well as possible changes to the adoption of the final budget for fiscal year 2022. And approve fiscal year 2021 financial actions as outlined, and approve the changes to position control for fiscal year 2022 indicated in Attachment A. This item may be continued to May 25, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. And in chambers, we have Assistant County Manager Valetich and the budget, Lori Cook, yes.
Ms. Valetich, welcome.
Good afternoon. Catch my breath, I just ran right down. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair. So this is the public hearing for the tentative and final fiscal year 22 Washoe County budget. Just really quickly, you can see highlighted in yellow today, this is kind of the end of our process of the year. We have the required public hearing. We asked the Board to adopt the budget, and then what we'll do is file it with the state by June 1st. Some highlights, I know we have this in the presentation last week, but we left them in here just to kind of go over ongoing pandemic recovery costs. We've got some expansion of regional homelessness services. I know we talked a lot about that already today, so that's really exciting that we're able to fund those services. Expansion of library services. Another large component of the budget this year is our legal obligation to pay property tax refunds per our settlement agreement. We're adding some staffing, some Commissioner support resources. We're restoring reserves, as we're recommending, and we hope you approve of that. And we still have our legislative session going on, so that's kind of the wild card that still remains. But hopefully, that'll be resolved soon. Some changes from last week. Just want to call out that we, between the recommended budget and the final, you can see that we're showing here in the column on the left the recommended, which was a total of $829 million last week when we brought that. And then there had been some changes in the works. I think Lori mentioned those, and we're bringing those back to you today. They've been included, so the total is $837,945,000. And we will be going through those changes in the presentation. Here is just by function. Again, you can see our largest function is public safety, followed by welfare, general government this year, which is a little bit higher, and that's because of those legal settlement payments that we'll be making, and then judicial. And then on the proprietary side, the largest component is internal service funds. Okay, the general fund. And I'm going to grab my paperwork here too, just to look at my notes, because that's a little bit small up on the screen, and apologize for all those numbers. Hope it's not too small for you to read. Okay, so in the general fund, first of all, I want to say that we have a balanced budget, and we're required by NRS to provide a balanced budget. However, the budget is being balanced this year by a use of one-time resources, so fund balance. And primarily, that is due to settlement payments that we're going to make. They're of a one-time nature. It's very appropriate to use your reserves for something like that. So if you see those red numbers there, it doesn't mean we're in a huge deficit. We are funding that with fund balance. And so the change is a little over $1 million from the recommended budget. And primarily, we had some contracts that were still being worked on for our investment in the CARES campus of operational nature. So part of it was for liability insurance, a security contract. And then we did add in a small amount of contingency because some of these things are still being worked on and as we adopt the budget, so to allow for that. And just as a reminder, when we budget contingency, if there's an opportunity to spend that, that does have to come back to the Board for approval. So it's not just a slush fund, but it's to allow some flexibility in the budget. So you can see that the use of fund balance, $35.7 million. That takes us down to an estimated $71.4 million of unassigned fund balance, 16.4%. So it's a slight variation. We were at 16.7% with the recommended budget. So that additional $1.1 million, it's a very small amount, but we did have to make those adjustments. And then also, I forgot to mention, and we talked about it last time, fiscal year 21 estimated budget is coming in better than we expected as we did the budget last year in the middle of the onset of the pandemic. So we estimate adding fund balance at June 30th of this year of $21 million. And so part of the recommendation today is to restore our stabilization reserve that we're allowed to have per NRS for emergencies, natural disasters. We tapped that last year for COVID. And then also to restore $3 million that we borrowed from the Risk Management Fund and a $1.4 million transfer to CIP for unbudgeted projects. And then again, this is just kind of looking at fund balance. So you can see the chart above. The red lines are expenditures. The blue are revenues. It includes all sources and all uses. And the green sort of looks like a foothill down below. That is fund balance over the years. And then the chart below, you can see the actual ups and downs. In some years, we do have to access fund balance. We did during the Great Recession, during the North Valleys floods in 2017, and we will be doing so in fiscal year 22. Again, we project ending fiscal year 22 with $71.4 million, a 16.4% unassigned fund balance. That's a little bit less than two months of working capital, so that's really a good amount, and it's right within the Board's policy of 10% to 17%. amount, and it's right within the board's policy of 10 to 17%. And I think Lori, I think this is you. So I'm going to turn it over to Lori to do the rest.
So, good afternoon. For the record, Lori Cook, Washoe County Budget Manager. So there were not any changes from last week when we had presented and discussed the sources for the general fund. So they are still the same at the 401 million. The majority, the bulk of those, 84%, are consolidated tax as well as property tax. So those figures did not change. There was nothing that came in that would require a revision of those figures. These are the property tax and C-Tax historical information. Again, that, again, this is not different from last week, but we like to include it just so it's a source of reference as we're, as it's related to the final. And again, uses went up slightly. So as Christine had mentioned, related to support for some homeless services, and we got those, that information after we had prepared the recommended. But none of the percentages as far as what those uses are going to be used were actually changed. So it was a bottom line number, but it was not large enough to change any of those percentage use splits. No change to the recommended new position. Sorry about that. They're all still included. There were no changes related to any of those positions, but leaving them in here obviously for, for detail and for the presentation. The same reclassifications as far as total. We'll see with the asterisks there. There was one that was approved at a cycle at the end of April, but it was back and forth, whether it be a July or an April or a May or an off-cycle. So it's still in there, but it has already been approved by the board. Transfers out related to the general fund. The only change here was the one that we've talked about earlier, which is the homelessness fund transfer to support those activities. And again, there are security rate at the campus, as well as some insurance and that small contingency. And then those are identified on slide 16. So the things that are highlighted in green are those items that changed between recommended and final. And again, the contingency that you see at the bottom, that would be funded with general fund transfer, but only accessed if it was necessary and if it came back to the board and the board approved it. So that would be a board approval item. It's not, it can't be appropriated without board approval. But those services and supplies, those were those other contractual items that we got those expenses, those costs for. And the same with the new positions. I think the board's seen them as well, but seven positions have been created for the homelessness fund. We call it off-cycle, but they're created before July 1, so that there was an opportunity to recruit and have those staff ready to go by July 1. So they're technically still new positions funded in fiscal year 22, but they've just been created already. So HR does not have to create them again. But no changes related to the recommended positions. Capital improvements has, gosh darn it, I'm sorry, has been updated. So there were some additional projects that were identified as well as carry forward. So what happens is when my staff works with the capital staff, if a project, we thought, I don't know, at the end of March, it was going to be done, now it's not going to be done. We have to budget in that next following year to try to figure out, what are we going to spend this year? What are we going to spend next year? So those adjustments have been made to the capital improvement fund. So that appropriation is about $5 million higher than the recommended. That is supporting, this is, and this will lead into the other capital item that we have. But for clarity and transparency, these are the, in the capital improvement fund, which is a separate than the other capital funds. These are the projects that are included in that capital fund. So these are the fiscal year 22 projects that are in the five-year plan in this fund. And then they're identified on there. If they say carry forward, then it's a, it's a carry forward. If it doesn't have an identification, it's a new project. And the same thing, you can see parks is a little bit higher. That's based on year-end true-up. It's nothing, it's just kind of the normal part of the process of, we might not get this done by June 30. We need to budget for it July 1, so we have the authority. And again, we can see the carry forward on a lot of those projects as well. Utilities is the same. There was a slight increase in effluent water projects, that 1.9 million, excuse me. But obviously, the largest project in here is the continuation of the Stumm Wharf expansion. And that is, and so the board knows, the board approved it, that is with a state revolving fund loan. So basically issuing bonds that the state buys at a very low, and we pay it back at a very low interest rate. Yeah, bless you. So that's how that project is being funded. And then roads, capital, and equipment services for heavy and light fleet. There have been no changes from last week. Now, that's it. That's today.
Thank you very much. This is County Manager Valetich and Finance Director Cook. I know we've asked a number of questions last week of you, but I'm going to ask the commission again. Is there any questions for either? All right. Well, Ms. Cook, Ms. Valetich, thank you so much for a very brilliant and very thorough presentation on the budget and getting us through another very challenging year and, you know, being conservative yet, you know, progressive in the understanding of how we can continue to do business here in the county. So with that, this is a public hearing for the budget. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment signed in on this item?
There's nobody signed in.
Seeing no public comment, we will close the public comment, bring it back to the board. At this time, I am looking for a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to make a motion.
Commissioner Hill.
And I just would like to also say, it was a true honor to do this budget with the staff. You just listened to us and our concerns for how we wanted to move forward and really found inventive ways to listen to the, the board. And Eric, you, you really led this process so well. So thank you so much. And I'm really honored to work with this board. This is a really great budget. I'm so excited to implement it for next fiscal year. The leadership of this board to continue to provide these community services and to really help our most vulnerable populations. I think the community is going to see Washoe County really stepping up next year. And so it's an honor to make this motion. So move to adopt the final budget for fiscal year 2022 and approve the fiscal year 2021 financial actions as outlined and approve the changes to position control for fiscal year 2022 indicated on attachment A.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Hill. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Herman. All right. Seeing no further public comment. I've got the motion and a second. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting. Please affirm your votes on the screen. All right. Now let's jump back to item 13. Mr. Manager. Thank you, Madam.
Item 13 is a discussion and possible action on the county manager's recommended capital improvement plan for fiscal years 2022 through 2026 and direct the county manager to submit the CIP to the state of Nevada and others by August 1, 2021 as required by NRS 354.5945, which requires all local governments annually to prepare a five-year capital improvement plan to be submitted to the State Department of Taxation and County Debt Management Commission by August 1 of each year. The CIP is a five-year plan for the county's capital improvements for parks, facilities, including trails, open space, and regional parks, libraries, roads under purview of the county, purchase of light and heavy fleet equipment, utilities, infrastructure, capital outlay for major equipment, and county buildings and other facilities. The CIP is limited to capital projects with an estimated cost of $100,000 or more for assets that have a lifespan of more than one year as part of the reporting requirements of the state and under Board of County Commissioner policies.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And Commissioners, is there a need for a presentation on the adjusted CIP budget that will be submitted to the state? Seeing none. All right. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment.
Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the item.
So move, Hartung.
I have a motion from Vice Chairman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hill. I'm with a motion and a second. No further public comment. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screens. And that is that. All right. Mr. Manager, we have come to the end of our business. We are on to item 15, sir.
Item 15 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to banners both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, it looks like we've got some public comment. Will you please call public comment?
We do. We have Mr. Kenji Otto signed in.
Good afternoon. I'd like to mention that last school board, I went to the meeting and announced that committees should be formed to recall the trustees of, of the school board, and that I was going to research that process. I also like to apologize to Jeff Church, the one of the trustees, because Mr. Church has always looked out for the children, the parents, and the constitution of this country and this great state. And I failed to exclude him from that process. I also liked you to go against SB 420, public health option. Why are we having the state look into a public health option when the federal government has already passed law, a law requiring health, and we have a process for that? So the state doesn't need to get involved in that. And I also like to mention that there is a meeting on May 22 at 10 o'clock of the Silver Knowles community in regards to the proposed firearms range off of Red Rock. And we have Commissioner Herman and I will be hosting that meeting. And it would be nice and interesting if the commissioner showed up as well, the other, the rest of you. This, we're, I expect a good turnout from the community. This is something of interest for them, and both in the pro and in the con. We've gotten a lot of good comments back. And we expect, and we are expecting to have the Chief Moore's representative, Sheriff Balaum's representative, and the lead range master there as well. I believe County Manager Brown will be there. And of course, Commissioner Herman. So that's pretty much all I want to say on that. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Otto. Appreciate it. All right. Seeing no further public comment. Signed in. We don't have any on Zoom. We will close public comment, bring it back to the board. We're on to item 16. This is Commissioners and County Managers announcements. Mr. Manager, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioners, anything further? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.